Oh yeah, they just moved you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I am calling the meeting to... Hello, everybody out there. I know we're running a little late, but we're now calling the meeting to order. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
I'm here for this one.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Councilman Wyrick, will you lead us in the pledge?
Okay, ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a full agenda. We're running a little behind, and we have a very nice ceremony to kick the meeting off. But before we go there, do I have any changes in the agenda order? A question for the clerk. Do we have questions or public comment cards regarding the need for the interpreter?
We have three public comment cards for item two. Does anybody here need a Spanish-language interpreter for Agenda Item Two? It looks like we do not. We have three speakers, but it looks like...
Okay, so we... I was going to suggest a reordering of the agenda if we didn't need to keep the interpreter. But if there is not going to be a requirement for that, I guess...
What if they come late or something?
Well, I don't know. Mr. City Manager, what's your sense here?
I think we should keep the interpreter.
Okay, fine.
At least until the right item comes up.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I hear.
Okay, is it all right with the council if we reorder that to take it up early so we know? And if there is no necessity, we could excuse the interpreter earlier?
Sure.
Okay, so let's see, which item is that? That is...
Two.
Number two.
Number two?
It's kind of near the front anyway.
Okay, oh, it is. So I don't...
Right after consent anyway.
Okay, we got it. Okay, is there a motion to move the agenda?
To move.
Okay. No objection? Okay, so ordered. We will now go to presentations, and we have sort of a happy time, sad time. We are... It is my privilege to preside, saying congratulations and passing on someone who's become a real member of the family from our Sheriff's Department. And we have the county sheriff here, I believe. James, you wanted to start? Well, let me introduce Sheriff Ayub. Yeah, he will be participating. James, you can kick it off, and then we'll go to what I consider to be the happy-sad portion, that's saying goodbye to you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Obviously, we had our last meeting before the break, but there were some things that I was trying to get finished before we had our winter break. We didn't get quite a chance to get it on the agenda. The last one was pretty full. But as you know, I spent a lot of time here in the valley trying to build a relationship between us as your police department and the community, a lot of outreach. So I'm going to read a little something that I've prepared to talk about that outreach, and I have some people here that I want to recognize as well. But the title of my essay here is also the same title as the artwork you're going to see later, and it's "Pink Moment Beauty." So since becoming the chief in Ojai, one of my goals was to connect with the community in a very personal way. When I first arrived in Ojai, there were a few incidents that really brought to light how little some people knew about what the sheriff's office does and what our deputies do and why. Which is really a shame, because we are very proud of the work we do, and we're proud to serve our community as your law enforcement professionals. As part of my outreach campaign, I wanted to make sure that our community knew exactly what we were doing and why. Because I know that what we are doing is geared towards making us a safer community. Who doesn't want to know that? So what did I do about it? I joined several local Facebook pages. I began having coffee with the chief. I hosted a Citizen Academy. I write for a column called Chief's Corner in the online magazine called The Hub. I also made a point of being out in the community. I walked to lunch, met people in the park, and made a point of being a resource for our community. At the same time, I was building a relationship with the community. I was setting an example and developing competency for our deputies, building morale, stating expectations, and setting the tone for the deputies in the Ojai Valley. For the morale building, I took ownership of our station. I have several projects in the works that were designed to be practical and also give the deputies a feeling of enjoyment in working at the station that is well-maintained and cared for. One of the station projects was redoing the landscaping of the station. The Ojai Valley is in a perpetual drought, and I did not want to waste water on watering grass. A local engine designer, Paul Hendershot, donated his time and skill to design a drought-tolerant butterfly sanctuary police station. The drawing is complete. The crews are ready to work. Now I'm just working on donations for the plant material so that we can complete the project. The other project was painting the inside of the station with brighter colors and properly displaying the trophies that we have for our Police Explorer post as well as the Deputies of the Year. When I sought a place for the trophies, I had a floating shelf that I installed to place the trophies on. However, the wall behind the trophies was missing something. It needed a picture, a map, a painting, or better yet, a mural. One thing I'm quite confident about is my lack of artistic ability. However, I am fully aware that Ojai is filled with many people with artistic talents. I reached out to a local resident and friend, Liz Rose, I have made since beginning to Ojai, and asked her if she knew anybody interested in painting a mural on the wall inside the police station. I explained to Elizabeth that I did not have a budget for a painter, but would pay for the paint out of my own pocket. Lo and behold, she found me a painter. Enter Aubrey Larson. Aubrey is 12 years old now. She was 11 when she started the project at the station. Aubrey did not know what to make of this opportunity to paint at a police station, nor what we were actually alike. Yet, day after day, little at a time, she showed up to work on her project. We all got to watch this art come to life as she added to it every day. Her dad, Jordan, mom Leah, and brother Ethan would come to the station to watch her paint as well. What I didn't know at the time was that Ethan also wanted to become a police officer someday. This turned out to be a great opportunity for him too, seeing what we were like, and when he turned 14, which he is now, he joined our Police Explorer post. In December, when Aubrey finished her painting, and it was more than I could ever hope for, it is a reflection of what she and I see in the Ojai Valley. It is so beautiful that I decided not to put the shelf and trophies in front of it. However, it adds to the uniqueness that is Ojai, the fact that we have a local artist with a signature piece of the Ojai Station. I can't think of anything more Ojai than that. After Aubrey completed her painting, her dad, Jordan, reached out to me and asked if I could call him. When I had a few minutes, he said, "No rush." I called him back, and we had a great conversation, and he shared with some things that make the story even more compelling. He says, "I wanted to wait until Aubrey was done so that you guys wouldn't treat her differently." He proceeded to tell me that Aubrey was born with a significant stomach deformity that caused severe acid reflux. The reflux was so bad that she refused to eat and began failing to thrive. Aubrey underwent surgery, trying different things to minimize reflux. However, there had not been a good solution. A couple of years ago, Aubrey was admitted to Children's Hospital 14 different times for a minimum of two weeks each. It was there during these long visits, being stuck in the hospital, where she developed her passion for art and painting, and it was the only thing she could do from her hospital bed. So Jordan then asked me if I had seen her come to the station with a little backpack. I mentioned my girls have similar backpacks that carry around with all their belongings in it, and he told me that the backpack is Aubrey's TPN, a way for her to get her necessary nutrients. All of a sudden, it made sense why she wouldn't eat the food we kept offering her, because she has to be very careful about what she eats. So I told him how grateful that I was that he allowed Aubrey to share her talents and passion with us at the police station. There's something special about having a mural painted by a 12-year-old local girl at the police station that helps draw a connection between the community and their police force. Even a greater accomplishment that her brother is now an explorer and pursuing his dreams in law enforcement. After talking with Jordan, a sense of reassurance that we are actually normal people, Jordan told me that he always saw us driving around and looked very serious and unapproachable. Yet, inside the station, he got to see a very different side of us, the human side, the side that's familiar, such as a brother or sister, son or daughter, dad and mom, because we are. We're all of those things. Our family got a little bit bigger this year. We gained a new family, one that's left a mark on this police department and certainly this chief. So for Aubrey, I asked the city to prepare a proclamation, which they have here, and it's suitable for framing. And it says, "Whereas Ojai Police Chief James Freihoff wished to have mural painted in the lobby of the Ojai Station, and he was put in touch with the young artist Aubrey Larson. And whereas Aubrey was only 11 years old when she started the painting project and 12 years old when she finished it, working on it in her free time. And whereas, as Aubrey's mural slowly began to take shape, it became apparent that this young painter had enormous talent, not only painting on a typical Ojai scene, but also capturing a sense of Ojai's artistic nature and natural beauty. And whereas during the time that Aubrey worked on her project, she got to know the police station staff, and they got to know her, forming a bond of mutual appreciation. And whereas the mural has a great significance to the staff of the Ojai Police Department and is not only a daily reminder of their young friend Aubrey, but also represents the connection the department has with the community it serves. Now therefore be it resolved that I, the Mayor Johnny Johnson, do hereby commend Aubrey Larson for creating Pink Moment Beauty, a work of art that will be admired by Ojai residents and police staff for generations to come. Signed to this 14th day of January, 2020." And so then, and before I forget, I need to give a shout out, because there are family members watching from home. So I wrote down their names here. Paul and Wanda Breakville, watching at home. Your granddaughter did beautiful work for us. Thank you very much. And so for my part, I had a picture. Our local photographer from the sheriff's office came up and took pictures of Aubrey and I and the completed work. And I framed this for Aubrey to have. And then also for the paint and for her time, out of my own pocket, there's a little stipend for her to enjoy, maybe a little something, maybe buy some more painting supplies, and continue her passion for art. And I have a clicker here to show you the artwork, so I know it's going to go the wrong way every time. There's her and Brian and I. There's the mural.
Oh, I love it.
Beautiful.
It's beautiful.
Like I said, it's absolutely stunning, and I can't think of a better representation for the Ojai Valley and for our police department representing this community. So thank you, Aubrey. I appreciate it.
Beautiful. Beautiful. Lovely.
Can I say what something?
No, I'm not going to go anywhere.
Yeah, don't go too far, okay? And I would like to introduce the sheriff of Ventura County. Sheriff Arub.
Good morning, Mayor John... or, excuse me, good evening.
Oh, it'll be morning before we get out of here.
It's been a long day.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city staff, members of the public. I'm Bill Ayub, sheriff of Ventura County, and I'm the guilty one. I'm taking Jim Freihoff from you.
Yeah, we were looking for him.
I know, I know.
Yeah, you are person of interest now.
There's a button. I know the connection Jim has formed with this council, with the community. I've seen it before in other places where he worked. He's done an excellent job everywhere he goes. I know he did an excellent job here. You heard from him in his own words how important it is to him to build that relationship with the community, to mentor the young deputies that he sets an example for, to work on creative ways to keep crime low in this valley. And he just gives of himself, and that's an expectation he has wherever he goes. And it's something I need at a higher level within the agency, and I think you can appreciate and understand that. But that's also an expectation that I have for someone who fills that role. And that's something you're going to get with Jim's successor. He's here this evening, Captain Jose Rivera. He's a 29-year member of the Ventura County Sheriff's Office. He is a very gifted investigator. He's worked, in fact, we worked side by side in major crimes, working homicides and some of the most serious crimes this county sees countywide. He's been a narcotics investigator. He's worked patrol. He's worked in our jail system. He is an outstanding human being, and that's what I wanted to speak to this evening. His resume really speaks for itself, but he has got the same substance that James Freihoff has. He's going to be committed to this community. He's going to give of himself and bring his heart to the job. And you will see that in the results that will play out in the community. He's going to continue the great work that Jim has done for you over the last few years. And so it's my pleasure to introduce Jose this evening. A little bit more about him. He's a Camrio resident, married to his wife Laura. They have their five children. And like I said, they live together in Camrio. And he is absolutely thrilled to be here, and it's my pleasure to introduce him to you this evening. I have a photo for the screen here. Just, oh, wait. We didn't see that. We didn't see that picture.
Oh, man.
And this is Jose.
Okay, all right, welcome. Jose, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the welcome. I feel very fortunate to be here, to be in this position. I look forward to working with everyone here, especially the community, in continuing the tradition that Commander Freihoff has placed in this community. Again, I feel very fortunate to be here. A little bit on my personal side, I know the sheriff touched my wife Laura and my five children. You'll probably see them running around here shortly. My four-year-old, I have a four-year-old and a two-year-old. You'll see the four-year-old running around here. He's aching to come up here and check out Dad's new office and look at the station, and so...
See the mural?
Yes, see the mural. He's very fat.
With the playground and Libby Park.
Exactly, exactly.
Hate my granddaughter, who's four.
Well, I look forward to it, and I'll be short. I know you guys are busy, and we have a full agenda for tonight, but I look forward to working with everybody, the community, council members, mayor. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I look forward to seeing you guys in the future here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome, Captain. For our honor, I refer to you as chief.
Thank you very much, sir.
And we're delighted not only to have you as James' successor, but he couldn't have been more flattering of a candidate. I have to admit that. And we take his opinion, we value it highly, so we're sure we're going to value you highly.
Well, thank you very much.
And Sheriff, thank you for...
Appreciate it.
...taking the time to come and introduce.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, Mr. Commander.
Commander.
This is the happy part. Nobody's more deserving of the promotion, but, you know, and we were all in your corner, but we knew that when the day came that you got the promotion, we'd be losing you to Thousand Oaks' gain. And for the benefit of the public, James, you started out working here in the valley many years ago, did you not?
I did. Ojai was my first patrol station, which is why it's always had a really special place for me, right? I was assigned here from 1994 to 98 in patrol, and then I was at the old Honor Farm, for those that remember, the Honor Farm on Baldwin, for two years. So I spent six years early on in my career after my, you know, stay in jail. Three and a half years are for my first time through, so that I got here in 1994, and I just loved it, you know? With the exception of one really, really bad day. It was a wonderful time here, and so I looked forward to coming back and having another wonderful time here, absent the one bad day, and I was able to do it. So very fortunate to have had the opportunity to be chief here, and I think I've said before that kind of the two bucket list items I've had in my 29 years was being the chief of police in Ojai and the chief of police in Thousand Oaks. And I'm blessed to have been able to do both.
Let me tell the audience, both here and at home, a little bit more about you, if you don't mind. And let me go down some of the... There's a lot of stuff here, and the sheriff covered some of it. But Commander Freihoff has spent, what, 29 years with the department?
So Jose and I are academy classmates. I've known Jose for 29 years.
It was a very good year. Produced a lot of quality people. He started in 1990, was a patrol officer, as he said, here in Ojai. He... I hope that you don't mind me mentioning the very bad day.
Please.
The very bad day. If you go by the station here, you'll see what looks like a kind of a street corner sign with the name Agary on it, and usually with a blue ribbon tied around it. And as a young man, patrolman Sheriff Agary lost his life here in the Ojai Valley. But in that altercation that led to his death, Jim wasn't the partner, but he was on duty, and he responded. And I don't know how many shots were fired at this gentleman on behalf of the community to make it safe. But he didn't kill the suspect, but he took him down with a shot, and that person is on death row right now, although I don't know that he's subject to that. I think it's lifetime in prison.
Yeah, I think the governor has taken the death penalty off, but he's still on death row. But he'll be there.
So that's a life-altering thing for a lot of people, but for a law enforcement officer, that's huge. And for Jim to come back to the valley and have such a love in his heart for everybody. And my understanding was, when you arrived, you went back to that scene, and by coincidence, there was a 22-year-old young man who was two years old at the time of this very bad day. And that young man said he was there when that happened, and today, I believe, he is... Is he a graduate of the academy?
Yeah, he's a deputy sheriff working out at the Todd Road facility.
Right, so as we say in Ojai, you know, that two and three degrees of separation, everybody crosses everybody's path. But I want to thank you, Jim, for what you've done for us in the past, but what you... Even more so for what you've done for the department, the community, with your commitment to this, the idea of community involvement. Walking to lunch every day, making yourself accessible to the public. When this started, you and I both kind of came on about the same time, and every night wasn't as pleasant as tonight. We were having a lot of difficulties where, I don't know, whether it would be miscommunication or bad information, fake news on the social media, reporting things that were going on that made the department sound like they were some sort of, you know, jackbooted, don't care about the citizens. And that was not true, but this gentleman came in and took it to heart, and immediately, he didn't just say, "Well, we're the good guys, you know, just trust us." He got involved with the community to where many of the critics, to start with, are the biggest supporters, and were really sad and called my office, saying, you know, "How do you let this guy go?" And I said, "Well, if you really love him, you want him to get his promotion, and to get your promotion, you get your ticket punched, you move on." But who knows? He may come back, you know?
Well, I don't want to get demoted.
Well, Sheriff, we consider it a promotion to come back here. Let's see, what else do I have? He received the Medal of Valor. He was the deputy of the year twice in his career. He has master's degree. He teaches criminal justice. He really gives back both to his profession and the community, and we were blessed to have you for the last three years. So, and during the Thomas fire, with you and Shane taking us into harm's way a little bit, but we were safe. But it was a pretty hazardous week or two that we had, and you guys, we had, you know, one of the remarkable things for this town is that people from all over the world knew about that fire. At the time, it was historically, unfortunately, we've had people who've sort of outdone us in terms of size. But if you ever look at a map, you know, they refer to us as the hole in the donut, but the fire was all around us. Half the town at least was evacuated. Then we had the concerns about looting. We didn't lose a structure. We didn't lose a life, and there was virtually... The people's homes were safe, because we went, what, from five officers to 55, taking care of the town while the fire guys did their job. And they came from all over the country too. So we're very fortunate. I have a couple of things I want to give you or present you with.
And I'm going to show... I'll show the pictures that we blasted by, as I sent these to Gail. So on my first day here, did two things. One, I went to 122 North Encinal where the shooting occurred, made peace with the house, stood outside. I was talking to Shane about how it all happened, kind of pointed at the tree that saved my life. I was shot at 17 times. The guy was armed with two handguns, and a giant oak tree saved my life. So I like oak trees a lot. So this picture was taken my first day off of training in 1994 at the church at Church in Kuyama. And so on my first day, I went back and did a recreation of it, first day as chief, Church in Kuyama.
Not a day older.
Just a couple of years. We might landmark that.
A gift for Aubrey. Five dollars will get you up to talking. Okay, let's see what we have here. First, we have a proclamation, and I won't be dull through it, because I think between the sheriff, you and me, we've covered it pretty well. It's a proclamation from the city council. Oh, and we have the cameras out there. Everybody, raise our God.
Got it? All right.
Can everybody hear me out there?
Oh, for the recording, yes. Hello, okay. We're on the air. We have a gift... Oh, here it is. I don't know how we're going to do this. I'll walk over here with you and allow you to... And what we have here is one of the flags that flew during the Thomas fire, where this gentleman was keeping us all safe. Okay, so I don't... They probably don't do this at the academy, but let me give you a hug. And we're not from France, so I won't kiss you on each cheek. Okay, so, yeah, live long and prosper. Godspeed to Thousand Oaks, and tell them we'll hold it against them. Thanks, Sheriff. Okay, and if Jose behaves himself, look what's... I'll give you a hug, okay? Here's your certificate. A certificate of authenticity of the flag.
Thank you very much. Well, once again, thank you guys very much. I appreciate it. As you know, I loved my time in the valley. It's amazing how many people thought, when I got transferred to Thousand Oaks, that they're like, "Are you moving your family?" And I said, "Well, I go, no, I don't live in Ojai." Because of my involvement, there was a lot of people that thought that I lived here. I actually was commuting from the east end of Simi Valley, so I was spending three hours a day on the road coming to and from. My drive just got a whole lot shorter.
I'm so happy for you.
So thank you very much. It's a lot of time back in my life. But I use the time wisely. I mean, I had a lot of phone calls, you know, anybody that had called during the day that wanted to talk. I had an hour and a half to give them on my drive home. So I didn't call people at 6:00 in the morning on my drive, and I didn't think anybody would be that receptive to it.
Right, and the marathon sessions of the city council that ran till midnight, and then you had another hour to...
Yeah, I'd get home about 1:30 in the morning, and then the household still gets up, because I have two teenage girls, and the house is up at, you know, 5:00 in the morning. So it was rough. I told them, I told Jose that the meetings have not gone too long recently. I know James has done really well at trying to keep the tasks on point, making sure that all the details are done. The staff has done a great job of making sure that what you're getting is ready to go. So I'm confident that you won't have to violate your 10:30 rule. Thank you all. I appreciate it so much.
Okay, we... Let's get back here on the agenda, and Public Communications is now...
You can escape if you want.
Yeah, anybody who... Mostly for the presentations.
Shifting gears.
Yeah, we're shifting to the...
Nobody's offended.
Thank you.
Just jealous.
Here's the public comment cards.
Okay, we've got a batch of them, and we have a closed session at 9:30. So I'm going to ask everybody to keep it to two minutes, but we will, if you have to go over a little bit longer, that will... And I'm going to call on Laura Ward. Come on up. And Jeffrey Starkweather, you are on deck. We have a little chair up front, but it looks like you won't have to take too long to get up here, so you remain seated.
Thank you. I'm Laura Ward. I am the publisher of the Ojai Valley News and resident in the city. Mayor Matt LeVere and the rest of the Ventura council decided to sue each and every property owner in the Ojai Valley en masse. This despite the fact they had entered into an agreement with the channel keeper. They claim this pain is needed so they don't get sued again. Our community has been attacked by our neighbors. And Mayor LeVere is planning to be elected as the Ventura supervisor to represent the Ojai Valley. He plans to serve us while he helps Ventura to our water, our rights to our water, and the money to pay Ventura's $3 million in legal fees along with our own. I urge the Ventura city residents to recall Matt LeVere and every member of their council for financial recklessness and... for financial recklessness and inability to lead. The Ojai Valley has reduced its water usage more than 50% since 1989 and is currently conserving water as if we were at a stage five drought. Ventura continues to grow, issuing ever more water permits and now making a grab for their neighbors' water. Mayor LeVere told me he had not read the lawsuit and that he let the city attorney and attorneys in Walnut Creek make this decision for him. The lawyers in Walnut Creek do not care about our friendship with Ventura or the, or if our cities go bankrupt in paying them, or even if we have water. These lawyers are holding three meetings beginning January 30th to explain it to us how they want this to go. And we need to be there and be ready. I'm asking the Ojai Valley to come together now, to stand up for our rights, to work together, to fight for, to fight Ventura and this adjudication. Here is what you can do now. Demand the Ventura City Council put on their big girl pants and dismiss the case. Call them. Email them. Urge your Ventura friends to recall them. Two, talk about and go to the Town Hall meeting, Your Water, Your Voice, Tuesday, January 21st at the Boyd Center in Sarrazoody Park. The Ojai Valley News is hosting this event with an expert panel to explain the situation, offer advice, and answer your questions. The city of Ojai needs to act to intervene on our behalf legally. Please take this up. Casitas Water needs to act on our behalf of the ratepayers legally. Five, subscribe to the Ojai Valley News. Start following the Ojai Valley News on our site and social media. We will keep you informed all the way to the convoy to the Los Angeles courthouse on June 1st. Come with us.
And the time and, time and place date for your meeting?
It's 5:30 January 21st. That's Tuesday at 5:30, Sarrazoody Park, Boyd Center. We've got about six panelists. You can fill out a question. They'll talk, we'll learn.
We're going to livestream it too.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll livestream it.
Okay, it'll be livestreamed for those of you at home or those of you who want to stay at home.
We're working our way off Facebook, but.
Video archived, yeah.
It's an important issue that needs everybody to be as educated as possible, you know, to. Okay, we got, Jeffrey Starkweather is up. And Dr. Neal, you are on deck.
I'm basically going to echo her comments, but I, I do want to point out that Bill and Randy and I were at a Democratic Club meeting in Ventura. And Mr. LeVere, who is the mayor and is a lawyer and does all kinds of complicated real estate and agriculture law, claimed he didn't know enough about the ecology and the science of it to have an opinion. And he didn't know enough about that area of law, which I found as a lawyer to be astonishing. I mean, if you're elected and you're suing somebody, it's your job, all of your jobs, to know what you're doing. And secondly, if you're running for office, wanting to represent us, you should be able to explain it, what's going on. I would say two other interesting things. One, they have a contract with this law firm for $1.8 million. And the other thing I thought is really bizarre is one of their people they're suing is the Casitas Water System. And of course, who does the Casitas Water System serve as a customer? Their largest customer is the city of Ventura. So it's kind of bizarre. They're actually like suing themselves. So I do think we need to stand up for this. I, I would love if somebody would file as a writing candidate to give Mr. LeVere at least a protest. And of course, if he goes in there and doesn't represent us, we can always recall him. But I think he needs to feel the pressure that Ojai is really upset about this. And I also, while I'm here, I'm the vice president of the Democratic Club of Ojai Valley. We have on January the 27th at seven o'clock, 6:30, I think, and our meetings are right here. We're going to have Steve Bennett, who's going to talk to us. Of course, he's running for the Assembly. But we're going to have Ben Pederi, who is the channel keeper policy expert.
Jeffrey, I'm going to have to ask you to, I've got a bunch of cards.
Okay, yeah, it's fine. Anyway, he, I've talked to him and he is a really good source of explaining about their lawsuit and the fact that they, the city of Ventura did not need to sue us. They could have resolved this thing between the two parties.
Date, time, and place for that meeting?
That is 6:30 at the Kent Hall, which is right over here.
Day.
On January 27th.
At Help of Ojai.
Help of Ojai, yes. Yes. So Steve Bennett's going to speak for half hour and be asked questions. And then he's going to speak for an hour and a half and people can ask some questions.
Thank you.
I think you get a lot of information from him.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be there.
Okay.
That's an opportunity.
Dr. Dre, and Alexia Parks, you're on deck.
Hi. So as all of you know and have taken action on, we have 10 years to make drastic change on our habits to be resilient against climate change. One of those things is actually being resilient with our resources. We cannot afford to lose water as a resource. That's what's going to happen if we lay down and let the city of Ventura take our water rights. What adjudication means for our community is drastic impact on our economy. Housing prices are, all of our, all of the, all of our expenses in our houses will drop in value. And it also means that our agriculture and our development will be managed and owned by unsubstantiated growth in the city of Ventura. So when we think about water, it's not just the water we drink, which is incredibly important. It, what makes our community and our economic growth and our, it makes everything happen here. And beyond that, when we think about our water resources in our agricultural zones, the wedding zones of our agricultural production zones are so important for fire resiliency. If we don't have wire, water, we can't fight fire. If we don't have water, we can't produce agriculture. If we don't have water, we can't grow with economic strength. If we don't have rights to our water, we don't have the ability to make our choices and to grow as we want to as a community. So I urge you to be very active in this issue. It's not one that we can sit back and let it happen because it's a long fight, but it's one that's really important for us all in the long term. So, thank you.
Okay, Alexia, you're up. And Megan Edwards, you're on deck.
Great. Actually, can I reverse the order and let Megan just speak first?
Okay, that's fine. Okay, two minutes and two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I represent Zip Health and my colleague is here, of course, Alexia Parks. I'm going to nudge us into some positive and good news. And what this has to do with is a newly signed in bill, Assembly Bill 377. 377 is described as micro enterprise home kitchen operations. And we are working within this bill and working within the Ojai Valley to bring it forward in, in this unique circumstance, in ideal conditions. The law focuses on creating new jobs for women, immigrants, people of color, and represents both workforce development and health improvement opportunities. It connects people who love to cook healthy, delicious home-cooked meals with neighbors who want to eat better food. Among them, busy two-income families, millennials, and seniors attempting to maintain their health while aging in place and avoiding isolation. Zip Health will be using the Micro Kitchen Blueprint that is already in operation in Riverside and, and moving forward, which includes all their forms and all our ventures, eventual forms and statutory guidelines, they'll all be present. As mayor and council members, would you not agree that you have an enduring passion to foster cohesive, healthy, strong, and resilient communities? What Zip Health will be doing is, is supporting that aim by helping people to make a viable living wage, to contribute to their wage in this very valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you state again your name and the, I couldn't catch the organization or what that word was? Micro Kitchen Zip Health or?
My, my name is, is Megan, not, not that Megan, another one. And it's Megan Edwards and it is, the bill is 377. And it is micro enterprise home kitchen operation, or what you may see referred to as MCO.
Okay, I get it.
Thank you. My apologies.
Okay, Alexia, you're up. And Robert Duffy, you're on deck.
Great, thank you again. And it's great to be here, my first presentation and to the council and to you all. We were down, we, this is our third presentation today. We were down at the Ventura Board of Supervisors or the, the board this morning where they actually had a change of the chair to a woman named Linda Parks. So I had to say Alexia Parks is my name, but I'm no relation. And when we describe this opportunity, which is the AB 377, 377, it is now a state law, is now applicable, and we are taking advantage of it to bring a living wage, as Megan said, to the valley, Ojai Valley, because this will be our first area to launch the project. And extend then down into the rest of the Ventura area. The California Micro Enterprise Home Kitchen Bill, which may be new to many of you because it is, just was signed into law as urgent and marked urgent in October, October 7th, signed by the governor and approved, is for cities and counties to support. And that's the urgent nature of it, to say it's a bill, it's in law. Riverside County has been the first county to, to open their doors to it. It was led by Mr. Garcia, not the same, but a different Garcia representative, Assembly member, who now created all the blueprint that we are following. So I will say it represents both an economic development and a workforce program and a healthcare opportunity. Who do we serve? People who love to cook, people who want to make a consistent income, as she mentioned, and residents of Ojai Valley who are seeking the delicious, healthy, home-cooked meals. That include locally sourced produce and an inflammatory meal for those who need that anti-inflammatory meal. We'll be training them on that. And we'll be training them to go through the process of licensing and all the hoops that they need to do to make it easier for that. Some of those we serve will include socially isolated individuals, including seniors who want to age in place. And seniors particularly are at risk of things like leaving the gas on while they're cooking, cutting themselves with a knife when they're preparing food, or maybe even eating moldy food that's been left in the refrigerator too long that they've overlooked, but they're still eating it and it could become an ER, urgent situation. So we feel it's an exciting opportunity and we just wanted to share that it's coming soon and we may even have some wonderful advisors coming on board right here in this room. So we appreciate this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Alexia. Robert, you're up. And my buddy Jack Weber is in the audience. You're next.
Hello, everyone. My name's Robert Duffy. I've lived in Ojai for about 15 years now. I grew up in carpentry in 1981 and graduated carpine in 90. My wife and I moved here over to Miners Oaks. And recently, about four years ago, we moved to the corner of Andrew Drive and North Montgomery. A great little neighborhood, lots of great residents there. It's come to my attention recently, in the last couple of days, that there was a proposal for an easement at the top of Daly, 1440 Daly, for public access to potentially the trail, Shelf Trail. I'm, I'm here today because it's a concern for me and many of my neighbors that have been on my group text talking about this. Because of the tourism that I've seen increase, you know, I grew up in carp. I spent summers back east in the Hamptons with congestion and stuff. Lived up in Galida in 1990 before the Elwood Shores expansion and all that. I've seen quite a bit, even in Marin, when I lived in Petaluma and Santa Rafael and Larksboro, I've seen quite a bit of success in tourism and, you know, success in expansion. So I've seen a lot here. I've met a lot of great families, third generation families here. I have a great quantity of friends that are, are from here. My concern is the vision, and I would like to know and understand the vision of this planning commission in the city for trail access, how it impacts neighborhoods. What happened to Signal seems, when I saw the Fox and Lucy Trails open, I saw a tremendous amount of impact from the traffic there. I, I used to go there a lot. I felt really bad for the neighbors. It sounds like it's on the slate to have that same thing happen to Daly, where we'll have a huge influx of tourism for people coming to the area wanting to go enjoy the outdoors at the expense of potentially the neighbors. So I'm here in opposition for that, wanted, you know, again, bringing it to the attention. And I heard earlier when I was here about stakeholders, I'm a stakeholder. You know, I'm in the computer industry, I know about stakeholders and I do feel it's important in, in getting that information. It's difficult to parse through, it's difficult for people to understand the easements and, and plans and permits and all this kind of stuff. And also to have a voice saying we don't want to have increased traffic into our neighborhood from strangers and, and outside influence.
Yeah, that'll be on the agenda tomorrow night at the Planning Commission. I would highly recommend you be there and express your concerns. And, yeah, there's still plenty of opportunity for public input and before, and it also could then come to the, or will come to the council at some point, I suppose.
Please go to the Planning Commission.
Mayor, I also think you can contact the planning director and you can actually call the city manager and get some insight as to their vision of what, of what is going to go on with that.
Yeah, because, because it's concerning in the sense of what are the, like, I think of children, there's a lot of children in Daly. What are the child density? What are the rules and regulations? What are the, the data that's been collected by the city? What are the, the guidelines for, let's say you introduce that, where, where can someone like me understand what that, what that implies?
It starts with Planning Commission.
Okay, and there will be a couple, there will be several opportunities. And it is a good idea, if you have the time, talk with the staff in the planning department. They can, you know, give you a little insight to what may or may not happen. It's still a choice. Thank you. Jack, come on down. And Sabrina, you're on deck.
Good evening. So I just want to begin with expressing my gratitude and humility for being here for that really beautiful ceremony with Officer Fryoff and, is it Mr. Rivera?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, coming in. And I was super, super touched by that. And I really felt your heart come through and all that and your appreciation for him. And it brought up my feelings of how rich and beautiful it is to be here in Ojai and to be with this kind of a community and with the young lady here and all the suffering that she went through and how she just dedicated herself to making this incredible mural. So I just want to bring back a little bit of that love that, that we started this whole evening with. And it, it segues nicely into my, my next topic, which is the topic I've been speaking about here for a long time. And I think it's a beautiful way to talk about climate change and climate emergency in light of the beautiful life that we have, the incredible privilege we have to be here and the amazing things that people do and the way people step out beyond their capacity and serve others and do things for others. And in my little, relatively short time here in the valley, that's what I've experienced here. And that's why I'm still here, because it's an absolutely beautiful place with amazing people. And on that note, it's like when you hold that beauty in one hand and you look at what's happening to the world in the other hand, don't we just want to just do everything that we can to make a difference? And I still fall back on this platform that Ojai has this amazing potential for how small we are and for the beauty in the community that we have here, to step out outside the box and really lead the way. And that's what I really hope that, that we can do here and to, to have more moments like this. And so that, that fuels our hearts and it fuels our love and it fuels our care to really step out and be world leaders.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. Sabrina, you're up. And Nancy Pearson, I didn't read all the rest of it. I guess Nancy, you're on deck.
Hi, everybody, Sabrina Venskus. And I, probably a lot of you know that I'm an environmental and land use attorney. I have an office here in Ojai. I practice all around the state of California. Hi, Ryan, good to see you on the council.
Sabrina's a colleague of mine.
So I'm here to let you know that Senator Scott Wiener of the Bay Area is back at it. He's introduced SB 50. I don't know if you're very familiar with it. I'm just going to give you a couple of talking points. SB 50 is the bill that would basically upzone every parcel except in high fire hazard areas to four units. So basically remove single-family zoning across the state of California. It's actually, we beat it back last year. It's come back and it's worse this year. I don't know if there's a strategy for that so that, that Mr. Wiener and his allies can, you know, come to middle ground on some of the terms. But I did want to let you know that it's currently scheduled. But I did want to let you know that it's currently scheduled to be heard in Appropriations Committee on January 24th. I want to highly encourage the city council here to pass a resolution opposing it. There are cities all over the state that are opposing it. It's another one-size-fits-all approach to dealing with our affordable housing crisis. In fact, it does not require even one unit of affordable housing in projects that are 10 units or less. And it also will, what I'm very concerned about is it gives developers the right to sue a city if it does not expedite and approve a development project that meets the criteria. It, like I said, if you, you can actually go on to livablecalifornia.org and you can actually put in the city of Ojai and see where this removal of single-family zoning will apply in the city of Ojai. It's almost the entire city of Ojai except in high fire hazard areas that's like sort of Upper Ojai and up here on Signal and so on and so forth. Just a couple more points, and then I'm going to give you a handout. It provides that the all-city, I'm sorry, let me get to this point, all-city, so it would allow developers to control up to six areas of city and community planning, including but not limited to setbacks, so the developers could limit cities' requirement for trees, green belts, and side yards. It gives developers an override of city size restrictions, adding 47% to 297% to building sizes. It allows developers to erect big apartment complexes with no parking, overriding city rules. It allows developers to override city standards, including design sustainability and safety that aren't already state law. It also allows developers to override courtyards and balconies. And then also, I think most disconcerting, or a big problem, I think, is that it allows developers to override protection of homes not on the California Registry of Historic Resources. And this is a big concern statewide for a lot of cities that have historic overlay zones and designate their own buildings as historic or other areas of the city. So I highly encourage the city to, again, pass a resolution formally opposing this really horrible bill that doesn't even provide for significant affordable housing in exchange for giving developers by right to override zoning. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Sabrina, real quick. The, is, do we know what the final SB 50 is going to look like yet? Because isn't, is it, it's got to come out of House of Origin, right? That's a, in the state legislature by the end of, like, that date you're saying? Do we, because I think, is it still getting batted around? Do we know what the final version is yet?
I'll send you what it is right now. It's a markup and it's an absolute nightmare, and it's, it's really very confusing. But I can send you the bill, I'll email it to you, I'll email it to everybody, and then also an analysis that really gets into the weeds if that's what you're interested in. It's, it's a.
Well, it doesn't hurt to provide it, but I will say we are briefed by SCAG, VCOG, you know, there's a number of other boards we're on that we're dealing with this all the time. But this particular bill is in, we're going to have a vacuum of time before we, when it comes out of the House of Origin under its timeline, we may not know what the final is before we have to move. So anything you could provide to us would be helpful.
I will, and it goes to Appropriations Committee on January 24th, so we're trying to get rid of it at Appropriations. I have this handout I'm going to provide to you. I'd like everyone to have it. It's, it's information on this claim about the shortage that California has of 3.5 million homes. It explains why that's not an accurate number, and so I thought maybe it would be educational for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sabrina.
Okay, Nancy Pearson, you're up with Ron Salorsino, our librarian, on deck.
Hi, I'm Nancy Pearson. I live at 1449 North Montgomery Street, and I'm here with my neighbor, Michelle Erlich. And we are here, again, to address the same issue that Mr. Duffy addressed. It is to do with the easement, which has been attached to a design review permit that's coming up for tomorrow for review at the Planning Commission. Yes, we know that. But I'm speaking to you tonight as our elected representatives and the people who actually run Ojai. I'm hoping that somehow you guys can go and talk to the staff and remove the condition for the approval of that permit. It was never addressed procedurally correctly. We never got any notice of it. I live, would be at 50 feet from the trailhead, and I never received notice of this. And it was never addressed in the design or the concept review in June. And I did come in and speak with the staff. I came in and spoke with him, and he said they didn't even think about this until like two weeks ago, and then decided to put it in as a condition. That's inappropriate, completely inappropriate, because it is such a huge concern for my neighborhood. We have a cute little neighborhood up there. There's kids that are elementary age, and they're running back and forth to the neighbors. They're all good friends. My son has his best friends with the Erlics and the Inmans across the street, and we are right at the terminus of Daly Road and North Montgomery. The easement that they're discussing, as a condition of the approval, will be attached to a single-lane road and go straight up to Signal, up to the Shelf Road. It's completely inappropriate, and I was told, well, we don't know, it's not really going to happen, but it is a cloud on my title because I don't know when they're going to bring it up, because I didn't get notice of the easement in the first place. So once the easement is granted, we all know how difficult it is legally and monetarily to remove that and to abandon that easement. Once it's there, it's there for good. And I'm just saying, remove that condition, let these people go and get their permit to build their two-story house and not put the rest of our neighborhood in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, you're up, and Ann Inman, you're next on deck.
All right. Thank you so much, members of council. I am Ron Salorsino, the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. And I just wanted to run through a few of the things that we have going on at the library this month and next month. To start, we have a gentleman, Paul Jenkins, who's going to be coming to the Ojai Library tomorrow, that's January 15th. Mr. Jenkins is the Ventura Campaign Coordinator for the Surf Rider Foundation, and he's going to be presenting a lecture titled "Community Resilience in the Face of a Changing Climate." So that's going to be at 6:00 PM tomorrow at the library. Later on this Saturday, we're going to have an author, Rick Tuber, who's going to be coming to the library to read from his work and also deliver a talk on film editing, writing, and what he calls noir-medy, which is a combination of the noir genre and comedy. Later on in the month, Thursday, January 30th, we're going to have Opera Santa Barbara coming back to the library for a noontime concert. So that's going to be a lot of fun, those are always a good time. And then on February 1st, we're going to be hosting retired park ranger Carol Peterson, who's going to come to the library to deliver a talk on Island of the Blue Dolphins and specifically the true story that inspired that book. It's going to be a presentation for young readers and their families, and it's going to highlight some of what the Channel Islands Park Service has on their website relating to the story. So it should be a lot of fun. The last thing I wanted to mention is that in the last couple of weeks, we started up at the Ojai Library, a new teen advisory committee. This is a group that is designed to develop leadership skills and offer service opportunities for teens in the valley. We're talking local junior high and high school students. The group's open to all teens and is going to be meeting monthly at the library. Dates are still a little bit up in the air, so anyone who's interested can contact the Ojai Library's youth librarian, which is Courtney Lerner, at the Ojai Library just by calling the main number, or you can always reach out to me with any questions. That's all I have, thank you so much.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron, appreciate it.
As always, thank you.
Ann, you're up.
Thank you. My name's Ann Inman, and I live at 1450 North Montgomery Street, which is right where Daly and Montgomery meet. So I'm here also to speak, Nancy shared a lot of my concerns, but to speak about the proposed trail access there, which would have a huge impact on us because the, when Daly becomes a one-lane road, that goes along the whole border of our property. And then in addition to that, you know, where assumably people would park would be all the front of our property. I understand the concept that perhaps when you have a building project that has some negative aspects to it, which I think some people would argue this project does, that maybe the builder would be asked to then offer something that would benefit the community in exchange, you know? In this case, perhaps, the idea being that it would be a benefit to the community to have an additional access for Shelf Road. I know there have been a lot of crowding issues at Signal and that sort of thing. But what is difficult for me to stomach is this, though the community as a whole perhaps could benefit from this, the immediate neighborhood, the immediate community is being asked really to shoulder two negative impacts. One, the building on the hillside there that has some issues, which I won't get into tonight because we'll see the Planning Commission tomorrow. But in addition to that, also, all of the negative impacts of the crowding of a trail with none of the benefits. So it seems an unfair burden to ask the immediate neighborhood to bear that. And I understand there are some issues at Signal and Gridley. I would encourage the city to try to work in those areas to solve some of those issues, to create some additional parking, to resolve those rather than adding another neighborhood with a whole set of additional problems with crowding. So I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that concludes the public comment period, and we will now move to the consent calendar.
Mayor, I would like to pull F and H, and only H if there's a Climate Commission committee member that would like to speak on it. If not, we can, I can let that go, but if there's a.
I don't know if he heard you.
Mean F, right?
Yes, F, I'm sorry, did I say F?
Yeah, you, well, you said H, but if there's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I did say.
Steve is here.
Climate Emergency Mobilization, which is F, I did pull that. And then I wanted to pull H, too.
Okay. Are there any other items to be pulled? If not, do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay, moves. Any second?
A second.
Okay. If there's no objections, so ordered. Okay, you pulled F?
Yeah, I pulled that first, and it's only to allow if there's anyone from the Climate Committee that would like to speak. I just wanted to give them the opportunity, if not.
Okay, is anyone?
Dr. Cole may want to.
There is.
Well, there's no need to speak.
Well, then, you don't have.
I'm giving you the, I'm giving you the opportunity if you'd like to, Steve.
Michelle Allison was going to be here, but she has the stomach bug. And so I said that I would be here for this agenda item in the event there were any questions when it was pulled. Essentially, the announcement is that we have a public meeting on the 25th of this month, it's a Saturday, it'll start in the morning, 9 o'clock. Everyone is invited. We'd like to have two of the council members there if at all possible, we can't have the third. And.
We can all go, right? We can all go.
All right, yeah. And it won't be a decision-making meeting, it'll be, yeah, we're just going to be.
Hand hug, you know.
Well, then we'd like you all to be there. If at all possible. And the other, the other item that is on that is, is a, that's going through the consent calendar, is a request to the council to approve staff to work with Ryan, myself, Phil White, and Lackey Tizopoulos, who's our new air pollution control officer, to talk about whether a memorandum of understanding could be developed to establish a greenhouse gas inventory for Ojai.
I have a quick question on that.
Yeah.
I really support it. I would hope that we explore all possible grant funding opportunities since we're, you know, if we're going to do a pilot project, there might be a grant out there to help pay for it.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, even at, certainly at the state level, there could be grants to do that because it's a good municipal example.
I just hope we would apply.
Yeah, no, I would hope so, too.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Can I just, the location is Nordoff High School Cafeteria for the meeting on January 25th?
Oh, yeah.
And it starts at 9?
9:00 AM, and, yeah, Saturday, the 25th.
I have, I have a question. Do you need anything from us to accomplish what, any direction, a motion, or is it?
Yes, we were requesting in the staff report direction to work with VCA PCD to develop a memorandum of understanding.
And seek grant, and grant, and seek grant money.
Yes, grant money is scheduled.
And I saw moved.
A second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve item number F with that direction. Any objection to the motion? If not, so ordered. Okay, we're now to H. Randy, did you have something you wanted to?
So again, you know, this is the attendance issue facing all the commissions. And, you know, we've, we've had this discussion a number of times, and so I'm not sure how we want to handle it. My preference would be that any commissioner that has three or more absences be notified that they have the three. Anyone that has more than three, might, we might want to send a letter out, just rescinding their position on the commission, and, because that's the, that's the deal we made, so.
Mayor? I'd like to kind of clarify what I'd like to see. Rather than use the word rescind, I think maybe we ought to think about maybe just having a motion or a policy, and I don't even know if we can take it up tonight, where when you hit that number of vacancies, it's just declared vacant, so that then that person can continue to serve until the mayor looks at applications and nominates either that same person again, if they make the case, or a replacement. That's what I'd like to see, just as kind of an automatic procedure.
So the, I like the idea that the person can apply again, the same person.
Of course.
Yeah.
Of course.
That's fair.
I have a question.
Ryan?
We talked about this sometime in 2019, and we made some decisions on this, and it's not really, I don't, I don't think it's included in here, and I don't know how many absences there are after we said clearly that we were sending a message that if it's going to exceed this amount moving forward, everybody, all the commissioners are on notice, and that we are going to be looking at it again. And this report doesn't give me enough information to be able to know, after we said that, what has happened. I know some of the absences, when we discussed this before, were kind of excused absences because they had various reasons. And it's kind of really difficult from this to say, hey, you know, we, I thought we had set the policy. I thought we had made it really clear. I don't know whether that policy is being followed or not at this point, so I can't make a determination whether this is a.
May I suggest, maybe the interest of time tonight, that we take this discussion as serving notice, and that we move to continue the item to the next meeting where we can have more of a full discussion of it, with that additional information?
I'm okay with that. So James, from when we had that meeting before, since then, and maybe an update from that date?
Find out what that policy is exactly that we did and research.
Okay, so ordered, and that will consider that means H is not.
And just one.
It's received and filed, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Continue the item for the next agenda.
Okay, we are now, item, did we reorder?
Two still first. You reordered two first, the number of friends.
I don't know what the request came from. Okay, we are on item number two. Mr. City Manager, you'd like to introduce the topic?
Yeah, just a brief introduction. The city has previously prohibited internal combustion engine leaf blowers, gas leaf blowers in residential and VMU zones. Recently, staff was directed to research additional potential internal combustion engine restrictions. To do this, staff prepared a lengthy attachment, which is included in the packet, showing various tools, and staff divided those tools into three categories, regulate, consider, and exempt. The items in the regulate category are ones that we are recommending to regulate further at this time. The items in the consider category are ones that we thought council may want to discuss further. But the three items that we recommend regulating due to the greatest impact and as well as the greatest availability of alternative options are leaf blowers, string trimmers, and non-riding lawn mowers. Those items are all, all have readily available alternatives and, and battery, you know, battery pack up, battery-packed alternatives. So the item, the ordinance that's brought before you regulates gas-powered leaf blower string trimmers and lawn mowers to further that. The item is written so that council could consider regulating other items. And the one point that we, that I wanted to reiterate, as we went battery-powered with our equipment, the, just a little factoid is that one hour of operation of a commercial leaf blower emits enough smog to be comparable to a, driving a Toyota Camry 1,100 miles. And so we just think that it's, it's an important factor to consider.
Okay, yeah, questions of staff?
I'm a little perplexed on why hedge trimmer is not put in the same category as string trimmer and leaf blower. I've looked at numerous websites for this type of equipment, and generally, the battery-powered, you know, equipment is as readily available for hedge trimmer as string trimmer and leaf blower that I've seen in terms of websites. And most of the multi-tool setups include hedge trimmer, string trimmer, leaf blower. So I'm just really. So, I'm just really kind of confused why hedge trimmer wouldn't be in the same regulation category as string trimmer and leaf blower.
Yeah. Hedge trimmer is one we wrestled with. We could have, we really debated, we put it in the consider category for council to discuss further because we just, we decided to focus on the three that had the biggest impact. So, that's the only reason why it wasn't included in that group.
I see. Okay.
And by impact, you're saying the number of hours that the others are used regularly once a week, whereas hedge trimmers maybe twice a year or something?
Exactly. Exactly. And then purchasing a new one for twice a year.
Randy?
Actually, I have the same thing. Hedge trimmers, pole hedge trimmers and pole saws all have battery-operated...
Readily available.
Readably available. So, I would include those in the regular.
Okay. Well, when we get...
So, we'll add that to the motion if we reach that.
Okay. Are there any other questions of staff? If not, I will open the public hearing. So, the public hearing is now open, and I have five cards here. Wayne Maden.
Two minutes or three?
What?
Two minutes or three?
Well, we can give them three.
Yeah.
Wayne?
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Wayne Maden, I live on Gridley Road, resident of Ojai. In reviewing the proposed language of the ordinance, I had a concern that the periods of operation is being deleted. The current regulation, according to what I read out of the attachment B, there's a provision that says the operation of electric leaf blowers is permitted in residential zones provided the following conditions are met, and it has hours of operation. And so, I just want to make sure that that's intentionally being deleted, and if, make sure council, because I don't know how loud these things are, but if you guys have experienced with it, and it's okay, then it's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Wayne. Steve? Dr. Colome. Come on down.
Well, I'm speaking on behalf of the Climate Mobilization Committee, which did make, provide a statement supporting the staff process. I think Councilmember Haney was really one to kick this off at this point, you know, clearly with the Public Works Department's conversion and the fact that through that simple conversion, we've eliminated 80 tons of pollutants into the Ojai Valley each and every year. This is a, you know, almost a no-brainer for its extension. And I think, you know, in terms of the alternate appliances that could also be regulated, one thing the council could consider is reviewing this on an annual basis and adding implements that should be, could be regulated under this ordinance each year as they become more available. The only addition that the Climate Committee made to this is that in the past, we've talked in terms of displacement volume in two and four-stroke engines. The California Air Resources Board looks at it very simply as the power output of the equipment using metric units. They, it's expressed as 19 kilowatt engines or less. That turns out to be about 25 horsepower. And the name that they give for this class of emission products are SOREs, S-O-R-E, small off-road engines. So, the committee supports the staff effort.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Any questions?
No. No, I have another question, staff, when the time comes.
Okay. Sheri Ann Kate, you're up. And do I have... Yeah.
So, I just realized, I have been living in Ojai for 32 years, and I think I've been coming to council meetings for 30 of those years. And most of the time, it's, what are you going to do about this? What are you going to do about that? So, tonight, it's different, and I'm just saying, thank you. This council is showing that you are pretty enlightened. You have done some amazing things, you know, declaring a climate emergency. Wow. And now, we have this Climate Mobilization Committee that's actually doing the nuts and bolts. We're getting something done. It tells me that you're making policy based on science instead of somebody's ideology or, you know, some economic interests or whatever. The word emergency means something to me. It's not like we have 20 or 30 years to do something. Back in the 70s, it was, oh, smoking is bad for you. And so, it was, thank you for not smoking. And we would just hope that everybody eventually would get the idea and stop smoking. Well, just now, 40 years later, the death rate from lung cancer has dropped. It's taken 40 years. We don't have 40 years now. It's an emergency. So, my axe to grind again is about enforcement. It's great for you to change the ordinances and put these things into effect, but they have to be enforced. And I know it's expensive to have hired staff, full-time people. There are so many violations all the time with the ordinance that we have now. Instead of hiring full-time staff, there is an app that a, one of our members of our group, Citizens for Clean Air in Ojai, gave to the former city manager. And it is where, yes, it costs money, but not as much as a full-time employee. And a citizen like me can go outside and take a picture with a timestamp of a violation, turn it into the code enforcement department, and that constitutes proof of a violation. Once this ordinance is passed, I hope you will consider getting this app, you know, even if it costs some money, it's not going to cost as much as a full-time code enforcement officer. So, thank you very much for being on this. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheri Ann. And yes, on Measure C, one of the...
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Then we would have money to do that, for sure. Okay. Thank you, Sheri Ann. And, oh, is Dr. Neal still in the audience?
I think she left.
Oh, she left. Okay. She... Okay. I don't have any more cards, so I will close the public hearing and the council...
I had a residual question of staff, Mayor.
Sure.
I believe the effective date is a 90-day phase-in. And I assume you thought through that in terms of the time. Basically, if we start this tonight, then it would, 30 days to another second reading. Then, if we adopted then, then 30 days to adoption, and then it would be 90 days after that. So, we're basically already talking about like 100 and, I don't know, how many days? But anyway, the point I'm trying to make is that I think you considered whether that's a long enough phase-in period in terms of impact?
We recommended a longer phase-in period than we were required to give because we wanted to give some time for the phase-in.
So, that's the 90?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's what, total of five months from tonight, roughly?
Roughly five months if we did first reading tonight.
Roughly. First reading is tonight, you could do second reading at your next meeting, end of January, and then it would take effect 90 days thereafter. So, that'd be February, March, April, end of April.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Yeah. I just wanted to, Sheri Ann's statement about enforcement, I think, is very important. I didn't see anything in here about registration, and I didn't see anything about licensing. And I believe that that would help in the enforcement. Is that as, if we require all landscape companies and maintenance companies to come in and get a license, I think at that point in time, one, we get that fee, we can make a determination of do we want to use that licensing money for some type of buyback or something else, training or educational opportunities. Two, having them register their equipment also tells us that they've done it. And I don't think it's going to take that much to have someone pull into the service, to our service yard and have one of the employees, one of our maintenance employees, actually take a look at it, give them a seal of approval. And this goes back to if we do venture into that app, that, one, they have their license on their truck. By the way, if you're licensing in the state of California, you're mandatory to have your license on your vehicle. So, two, they comply to that. Three, it makes it easier if there is an issue that we have certified equipment that has a label, we have a license on it, and we can educate that individual as to what they need to improve, what they're doing within our community. So, I think we need registration. I think we need licensing, and I'd like to see it part of this.
And I would like to add, Mr. Pendrick, Wayne's point is very clear, too. We shouldn't be deleting time of operation for commercial use either.
Agreed. We actually think, we agree with that. I think that was unintentionally omitted, so we'll add that back in if council's okay with it.
And Mayor, one other comment, too. I think what's important is, if you take a look at other cities, they always, when they, when they create ordinances like this, they always exempt themselves. And one thing that we have to be proud of as a city is that we have not exempted ourselves. We're leading the way in this. And again, it's some small steps to reducing that carbon footprint, but it's the right steps, and it's in the right direction.
Can I answer the question about the licensing issue? Is, we did try to write this ordinance in a way that is easily enforceable because we have one code enforcement person that is part-time. We had issued, the city had previously not issued citations for it. In the last four months, I think we've issued 15 now, so it is being enforced now. One of the challenges right now is that certain zones allow gas leaf blowers, certain zones don't. So, we get a lot of calls from people who aren't sure if it's allowed in that zone or think it's not allowed, but it turns out it is. So, we wrote this ordinance to try to clarify all of that. It's not, you know, gas blowers will not be allowed anywhere in the city.
A matter of any zone, period.
And then, the business license issue specifically, because we're writing it fairly broad, the way we were planning to enforce that is that any gardener or landscaper, and it's in the attachment on page, attachment B, page three of six, any landscaper or gardener without, would be required to provide a proof of purchase of an electric leaf blower and a signed declaration that the company will not use prohibited equipment in the city. And so, we figured because it's a, we wrote this, we didn't have, you know, different displacement levels or anything like that. It's just no gas blowers, mowers, or trimmers. So, we're going to try to enforce it that way.
I'd like to make another comment, Mayor. In the interest of time, I will suspend my critique of the staff report regarding generators.
I'm sure you'll give it to me at some point.
If the council will entertain that we put that on a future agenda for discussion.
Definitely.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Ryan?
I am, not every city has a representative. I happen to be a representative in the Air Pollution Control District. We had a meeting today. At that meeting, our new director, Locky, who had been up here for our dismantling event where we actually physically destroyed the gas equipment that the city had, he was very excited about it. He put pictures up. I have to say that I had a nice picture drilling a hole in somebody. The mayor over here had a beautiful picture of him with a sledgehammer and a hard hat on, really destroying some equipment. We are one of only two cities on the planet that have been qualified, as I can't remember, it was called a green zone, I was going to say it wrong.
AGZA Green Zone.
AGAZ Green Zone. The other one is in South Africa, I believe. It's not even in Pasadena.
I think it's South Pasadena.
That's what they told me today at APSC.
Same thing.
It sounds better. The, it's something we're really proud of. And this is, as Randy said, this is us leading by example. It's a small step, but it's really important. The amount of pollution that these devices put out makes them untenable in the modern world. They're just not available. They should not be considered available for anyone that has any consciousness of our environmental concerns. The enforcement on it, not only do we need to do it, but I will tell you, you can ask the workers for AT&amp;T, and you can ask the workers for Casitas. I'm happy to report, that's my fine. I sent you for doing it in front of my office, idiots. And it's not cool that these other agencies come into our town and don't think they have to play by our rules. So, it's not just our citizens, it's not just the commercial businesses, but it's also these contractors and other individuals that work for other agencies that don't think they have to play by the rules. We all need to enforce the best we can. I don't love doing that, but I am, literally, the day we had our dismantling event, AT&amp;T workers were in front of my office using gas blowers. And I just thought that that was, in fact, I got out of my car, they blew it right on me, which did not help either. But this is really a small step and a much bigger step that's leading by example. We talked about it today at the Air Pollution Control District Board, that Ojai is not only committed, not only has this reputation, but we are leading the way. We're going to continue to do that. And for the people out there that don't understand that this is going to be a necessary thing for them to change in 90 days after this final reading, that is the spirit of our community and something that is in the fabric of our culture here, and we're committed to it. And yes, it may cost a couple extra bucks to get new equipment, but once you understand the impact that these small devices have on this particular issue, it is, as Mr. Colome said, a no-brainer. And I am very proud that the Air Pollution Control District is not only stated that Ojai was an example, but there were other communities and representatives from their councils that asked me about it. And we did this by going to our staff and saying, hey, are you willing to change all these out? The feedback was 100% that not only was it easy, but it was better to use, it was cleaner for them to use in general. The, you know, our area where we stored stuff where it smelled like gas and was kind of a problem now is much cleaner and much nicer to be in. There was really a top-to-bottom increase. And I talked to the guys myself, and they said, no, we're in the battery pack. And dealing with this was a, was actually an improvement on what their daily lives were because they liked the equipment a lot more. So, please understand that this does not come lightly. We are going to lead the way. We're going to continue to lead the way. And I think, you know, as some of these other areas that are under consideration, if we don't do them now, I think we ought to make sure that we come back in not too long as the world is changing and see what we can do. And while some of these may not be readily available at this moment, I think we need to push the envelope on what we need to do while being conscientious of our, you know, the community. But I am, I am proud that we are going to move forward with regulating this the best we can, and I encourage our citizens where they see people aren't acting properly to tell them first, but then remind the city if needed to enforce.
Mayor, last comment for me is...
Did you have a comment?
I'm fine.
Okay.
These are, I love what I'm hearing. It's great.
I just wanted to, I'm not going to push for the licensing. However, I will push that the app comes back for discussion along with licensing before the 90 days is up.
And the generators. I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion?
To approve the staff recommendation with the addition of, I'm going to go for it, hedge trimmer, pole hedge trimmer, pole saws, and lawn edger in the electric regulate category, inclusive of the time of operation being put back in for commercial use. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Okay. And Randy seconded. Suzie, you?
No, they can second it. I've lived for this day.
So, just to clarify, that would include everything under regulate and everything under considered, correct?
Yeah. Okay.
You know why I've...
Is there, just a second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Plats?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wierig?
Yes.
Motion passes. How about that? You lived to see it. So did I.
Yeah. I want to say why. I, I'm not exaggerating because I, as a yoga teacher, there's nothing worse, well, there probably is something worse, but when you put your students in shavasana and then somebody comes by with a leaf blower, inevitably.
Well, at least they'll be battery now.
Shavasana is the corpse pose, isn't it?
They'll still be there and be battery, though.
The deep relaxation pose.
I'm having a hard time picturing the shavatsa position, but.
All right, so a motion carries. We now go to item number three, text amendment regulating accessory dwelling units.
Oh, boy.
Mayor, can I, can I, help me to do this, but I, to help us expedite this meeting and to get things done quicker? I'd like to move item six before item three and just make a motion that we all stay on our same committee assignments for fiscal year 2020.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Well, that's fine with me, yeah.
Does anybody care what your opinion of everybody is? Because it's really hard for me to get to V-CO every month, so.
Oh, you don't want to go to V-CO?
It's very difficult to get to Camry at 5:00 PM on Thursdays for me. But if there's no other options, I mean, I can get to V-CO.
No, you have a right to not be on that. Did anybody else like to serve on V-CO?
Mayor, you want to?
Okay, well.
All right, I'll continue on for now, we can discuss.
Can we help you? Can we take turns?
We can alternate, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ryan, you and I can talk.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay, move on.
Okay, so do we need, we don't need a roll call on that, do we? Okay, so without objection, the motion passes. Okay, let's go to item number three, and that's text amendment. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I'm going to do just a brief, very brief introduction before I hand it off to the city attorney and just remind everyone that this item is in response to changes, several changes in state law regarding accessory dwelling units, which our city attorney will, will fill us in on. And it's intended to, to bring the city into compliance while still maintaining what ability we do have to regulate. So with that, I'll hand it off to the city attorney.
And on that front, I'll give you just a brief staff report. Of course, the detail is in the papers, and it was discussed at length at the Planning Commission over a couple of meetings. The Planning Commission did, in the end, unanimously recommend approval of the modified ADU ordinance. The key changes that were made were a couple. One, on size limits. The state has adjusted the rules here to continue to allow minimum and maximum size limits, but only if we do not prohibit an ADU that is at least 800 square feet in size, 16 feet in height or shorter, and with four-foot side and rear yard setbacks. So we've added a provision at the bottom of table 10 to, Table A in this section, 10 to 1709. The new footnote number, bear with me a second, our new footnote number three and footnote number 1G together accomplish that purpose, that we're not going to limit an ADU that meets those four triggers. Again, that's minimum 850 square, 800 square feet in size, 16 feet in height, and four-foot side and rear yard setbacks. Notably, front yard setback is not on the protected list. We can continue to impose our full front yard setback. That also is reflected in changes to the setback section where we've added side and rear listed at four foot and in the square footage limits, which have added the reference back to that new footnote. On the parking front, we now can no longer require replacement of a garage that's lost for the primary unit, but for the typical ADU, it is still one space per ADU or one space per junior ADU, except if the ADU is within half a mile of a transit stop or within a historic district. And those are all reflected in the code. We also can no longer require one parking space for ADUs that are attached to a primary unit. So if the house and the ADU are together, then we, that one is this, is a change. The state flipped the switch there. We can no longer require parking for that ADU, but still the two spaces for the primary unit. The next big component.
The two spaces are still required even if the garage has been converted and eliminated? Is that right? They still have to have off-street parking for that?
No, that's the one exception. The garage, if, if the two spaces were in the garage and they've converted the garage, we can't require those spaces to be replaced. And yeah, your, your look is correct. It's foolish, but that's what the state has done. So if it's a, the ADU is placed somewhere else on the property, we can still require the two spaces to be in the garage. But if they take the garage and convert it to an ADU, we can no longer require those spaces to be replaced. That has been preempted.
I have a garage question, too, and the time is right.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I'll come right to you. But so you're saying that under the, the law, that the, that improve publicly, or improve off-street parking for a principal resident can be eliminated with no parking, but if they want to put an ADU in, they're going to have?
One space for the ADU.
It's not internally consistent.
Yeah, okay.
We can't look for logic to this bill, is one thing to remember.
Did I hear you, Mr. City Attorney? Did I hear you say that you, we can, the city can no longer require a garage for the primary unit? And let me ask, let me explain why I'm asking that. For the last five years, I've rented a house with a garage that's just a fire trap. It's completely and utterly useless. It hasn't been used probably in 30 years. But I'm not allowed, the landlady's not allowed to demolish it unless she has the funds to put up a new structure. Is that no longer the case?
So the, the allowance to get rid of the garage and not replace it is only if the garage is converted to an ADU?
But it's, it doesn't, it's no, it's, it's not good enough that it's a useless, it's a fire hazard, is what it is.
There are separate rules related to fire hazards, so that might be one that we should take a look at more than this moment.
Okay.
There are separate rules for fire traps.
So, so this, so you're saying that I'm, to the best of your understanding, the, the, did I, I thought I did hear you say no longer require garage for primary unit. Did I not hear you say that?
That's correct, but there's a, there's a piece that has to be added to it. No longer require garage parking for a primary unit only if the garage is demolished or converted into an ADU, into an accessory dwelling unit.
Right, so if you're creating a new dwelling unit, they're allowing you to?
Where you're parking.
Yeah, they let you. Yeah, they let you not replace the parking.
But for a regular house that doesn't have an ADU, just, just the house itself and no ADU, no accessory dwelling unit, then the rules are the same. And the house is still required to have two primary spaces, or two, two spaces in a garage. This only, this ordinance and this law only protect accessory dwelling units. They don't protect houses without an ADU.
I got it, I got it.
But that, we should look at that more than this moment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
I hope this is all clear to everyone, okay.
Two more brief comments. One is, the other pieces that are new in this is the concept of junior accessory dwelling units, which is all on page 11 of Attachment A. Junior accessory dwelling units are separate dwelling units that are included in the primary house. So they're the back bedroom that's converted, more or less.
Does that also include the garage?
It could be a garage, yes. And a junior ADU.
Are you enjoying this?
It's so crazy.
Watch the Planning Commission go through this.
Yeah, there was a, this is a short version of a much longer discussion. The junior ADU is, used to be purely optional, and so we didn't have to deal with it. But the state flipped the switch on what was optional is now required. And if we don't have an ordinance that regulates junior ADUs, then the state will, we will be forced to accept them under the state's regulations. My recommendation, as the Planning Commission occurred with, is to adopt rules governing them in our code so that homeowners who wish to do it know what to look for. It's all in our code. And for those who may be opposed to their neighbor doing it, they know what the rules are, and they can look also in our code. Junior ADU, it's a, all the same standards as an ADU, but some lesser standards. There's no parking, the max size is maximum of 500 square feet, and a junior ADU has to have a separate sleeping and kitchen facilities and a separate entrance, but it may share sanitation facilities. In English, the back bedroom has to have its own door, which might be a sliding glass door, and it has to have its own kitchen, which might be the wet bar with a deep enough sink and a hot plate. But it has to, and it, but it need not have its own bathroom. It can share the bathroom with the main house at the, at the applicant's option. And then if you approve that, then it becomes a junior ADU. The second piece that's new, and this one may be less impactful here given the characteristic of our housing stock, is multifamily ADUs. This also is another one out of the wisdom of Sacramento. Multifamily ADUs are accessory dwelling units on apartment complexes or condo complexes. And they're allowed in two categories. One is up to 25% of the number of units in the complex can be added, but only if it's conversion of existing non-habitable space, the laundry room, the gym, that giant boiler room, et cetera. Those can be converted into ADUs, but up to 25%. It's obviously not meant for places like Ojai, it's meant for Oakland and San Francisco. The second category is up to two detached ADUs on any multifamily site, as long as you can meet certain setback and size and location requirements. I'm not expecting too many of either of those categories to be built, but we did allow, add provisions for them. Here again, the state requires it whether we have it in our code or not, but the recommendation is to include it in our code so that someone who wishes to do it or wishes to understand what the rules are or are not can look to just our code and doesn't have to also look at the state code. And that would be the key points. There are other points in the staff report, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, we?
Couple of questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Two questions really quick. I reported back to this council when I was, went to the Long Beach League Conference that a spokesperson for HCD said they were on the verge of issuing guidelines for how tiny homes on wheels would be counted as RENA, are affordable by design. Has that happened?
Not yet. HCD keeps promising they're on the verge for tiny homes on wheels.
For months and months and months and months.
They're not always the speediest.
All right. And second question really quick is fees. You know, we have the language about school district fees again. Is there anything in this, these new sets of laws that, you know, keeps school systems with declining enrollment for charging fees under the Education Code that, you know, supposedly to build for increasing enrollment? And basically working against the entire legislative intent of this type of legislation?
So the, the new rule does have some new rules on fees. And school district fees are included, under the Education Code or the government code, are included in the impact fee category. And our code provides that no such fees shall be assessed on an ADU by the city. Of course, the school operates under its own laws.
But they also state here they can't be assessed by the school district as well.
Right, but the, the issue there is we don't have the power to limit the school district's ability to impose fees.
Did HCD put out some guidelines to get the school districts in line with the sanitation districts so that we're all on the same page here?
And that's where I'm getting to. That is where the rule, the law has changed. Now, ADUs smaller than 750 square feet cannot be charged any impact fees.
At all, not by anybody?
By anybody. The key there, but hold on a second, there's a difference, distinction between impact fees and utility connection and capacity charges. So the sanitation district fee is the latter. For an impact fee, that would be a development impact fee, a school district impact fee, something like that. The rule is if it's under 750 square feet, no fees. If it's above 750 square feet, impact fees can be charged, but only if they're proportional to the size of the ADU, which some are all impact fees and may not be proportional to. And that would include the school district fees. For the utility fees, the rule is slightly different trigger. There, the trigger is, I have to double-check my notes real quick. If an ADU is attached, then it can, then they can continue to impose connection and capacity fees, but only, this is utility connection or capacity charges, but only if they're proportional to the impact of the ADU on the system, meaning that they vary by square footage or by number of fixtures for plumbing-related fees. If it's attached or if it's within the existing structure, then there are no utility connection or capacity fees. And to facilitate that development to the extent we can, our code here continues the same rule we have now that a ADU of any stripe can have commonly or separately metered utilities at the applicant's option, which means if the applicant so chooses, they need not separately connect to the system, which would, in some cases, trigger those utility capacity or connection charges.
So Mayor, just one question along with that. So the, and these are all, there's, there's, there's so many. But this will be a simple one, Matt, I hope. So if I'm on a septic system and I want an ADU or a junior ADU, and I start adding, I'm sorry, and I start adding fixture count to my septic system, am I going to be required to replace my septic system?
So we've provided that you are allowed to continue to use your septic system if you prove to the building official that your septic system can accommodate the added fixtures you're adding on top. So if you can show that your septic system is safe and effective and can support another bathroom or another kitchen or both, then you can continue with it. If your septic system is currently failing, then you wouldn't be able to add to it.
I'm sorry to hear that because that just creates a lot of confusion. Septic systems are designed on capacity, and the capacities are dictated by the amount of fixtures in a house. Not the amount of flushes, but the amount of fixtures. So if I add the, if I increase the amount of fixtures, you're telling me that I have to prove to you that that's not going to cause harm to my septic system? And how do I do that?
It would be in the application process to demonstrate the sizing of the system.
How do I demonstrate that?
You would produce the eviden, the materials that shows what size it was when it was built.
You see what I'm trying to say here? That's a heavy burden, and I'm, I'm lost on that. But that's what, that's what I'm saying. There's a lot of these. We could, we could be asking it on and on and on.
Contract of only certain number of flushes per week.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they put a governor on the title, yeah.
It's in the lease.
Okay, are there any other questions before we go to the, okay, if not, okay. The public hearing is now open. Wayne, you've been very patient, come on up. And Ray Powers is on deck.
Good luck, Wayne.
Thank you, good luck.
Wayne Maynard, Ridley Road, a resident of Ojai. My concerns I have with reading through the staff report and the proposed language has to do with the maximum size of the ADU. The staff report indicates a square footage of 850 square foot or 1,000 square foot for more than one bedroom. Then the table talks about, Table A, you look at it, it says 1,200 square feet or 50% of the size of the primary residence. And it refers you then to footnote three, which notwithstanding the maximum floor area stated in Table A, the maximum permitted size shall be 850 or the 1,000. So I don't see how you get to the 1,200 square feet. It appears that the footnote is, applies to the percentage factor. If the, if the house, primary house is less than, I suppose, 2,400 square feet, then you can't go up to the 1,200. And it seems like that that's the exception. So it's a little bit confusing, I believe, when you read that. With regards to the 50%, I don't really understand. Maybe somebody could explain what, why we have a limit of 50% for an accessory dwelling unit of the primary unit. What's more important to me would be the setbacks and, and the size. Why does it really matter how big the primary residence is? If we want to encourage second dwelling units and allow, you know, a family to have at least two bedrooms, it seems like that if the property is large enough to, to allow it, then we should permit it, not just restrict it because of the primary residence size. I also have a concern with regards to the Table A. The word new, it starts off each of the heading, the heads of each column, the header of each column. I believe my assumption is that that's probably word is used in order to preclude that from being a retroactive requirement to existing ADUs. But I think it also precludes existing ADUs from perhaps increasing the size of their area if they're a legally existing ADU. I think they should have the same ability to go to the same sizes that the new ones do and come down and apply for a building addition. So I think that that might need to be looked at as well.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. Ray, you're up, and Jeffrey Starkweather, you are on deck. Jeffrey still there?
Hello, council, Ray Platt, Ray Powers. I'm going to speak as a private residence, not a member of the Planning Commission, but certainly with the six or eight hours the Planning Commission has put on this. My head's not spinning anymore, but it still wobbles a bit, so. I spoke, I brought, had brought this up before, and that is for your consideration that a junior ADU can be part of an ADU. So if someone builds 1,000 or 1,200 square foot ADU, which could potentially be a two- or three-bedroom unit, that they be allowed to have part of that as a junior ADU. After all, what we're after here is affordable housing. And junior ADUs are a way to have even more affordable housing. So to limit the junior ADU just within the primary residence doesn't make sense to me. So I'd like you to consider that option. I want to speak a little bit more about the intention of affordability, which is affordable by design. This may be a non sequitur, and I apologize if it is to this topic. But I want to bring up the concept of having a library of pre-permitted ADUs, pre-permitted designs that people can go, get over the counter and save a lot of money. If we can save the homeowner who's going to build it money, then that hopefully will get passed on to the rental tenants. So that's, I just want to put that out, that there is a methodology we can start surveying, I'd be willing to help, all over the country for pre-permitted designs that we can then just offer to our citizenry. I also, and this may be heretical. I also, and this may be heretical, but maybe the concept of rent control on new ADUs, that it costs X amount, and here's how much you're allowed to use, and I don't know if that's legal, but here's, you can't go over, have a maximum amount of rent that can be charged for the specific size of the ADU. And actually put some things in place. So we do stay with affordable by design. In regards to septics, again, this might be heretical, but we could look at compost toilets. They've been around forever, forever meaning like 30, 40 years, and the new designs work really well. So there's a way to get over that hurdle that you were talking about, Councilman Haney. So that's all I have to say now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Could you, could you stay for a moment? I guess, can I ask, my question, going back to having junior ADUs part of an ADU that connects to what Wayne said about the 50% limit of the primary residence, because there are going to be cases, situations where there's a huge lot with a very small primary residence, right? So then it doesn't make sense, if it's a tiny house, a small house, to make the requirement that the ADU be, follow my, my 50%. Okay, this is all, yeah.
But if you have a 2,000 square foot home, you could build a thou, and you have the right setbacks, you could build a 1,000 square ADU, let's say a two-bedroom, and one of those could be a junior ADU with its own separate entrance and its own mini fridge, and it could even share the restroom from the other part of the ADU.
Yeah. If our goal is to provide housing and as affordable as possible, that makes sense to me, thank you.
I mean, the density of parking around all this is a whole nother issue that is another discussion.
And the affordability is also another discussion, even though it ties in. You know, some good suggestions when we get back to the affordable housing issue, how you do it and whether it complies with the state law.
Yeah. And there are situations where the number of cars are limited, you know, those ordinances exist.
Okay, thanks, Ray. Okay, is Sheri Ann still here? I know that she made this card out by mistake because she had the one on two, okay. Then the public hearing is now closed. Bill?
Couple of quick questions. If, to either one of you, so is the situation as proposed, basically state law saying that if I get a permit to build a storage shed, that that, basically then acquire, I acquire an entitlement to convert that in the future, whenever I want to, to a dwelling unit?
So the storage shed you build, is it built to the building code?
Yes, it would be built to the building code with a permit as a storage shed.
Yeah, then that could be converted.
So anything you build new as a non-dwelling accessory structure acquires a ministerial right to convert to a dwelling unit in the future?
Provided it meets the rules about an ADU, then yes. With the other exception would be, if you already have an ADU, you can't get two.
Right, I understand, if I didn't have any.
Yeah, if you had a house and no ADUs and you build a storage structure built to the building code, then you could convert that to an ADU.
Yeah, just by virtue of it being there.
Yes.
Okay, there's no date cutoff, in other words.
No, there's no date cutoff.
Okay. And how does the new program, the new law on the amnesty program interact with the program we have now, I believe expires in March 2020? And should we formally extend our program? Because it's very health and safety oriented, and it also waives some particular requirements, clarifies the standards under which the building official is to, should we, should that be included also, that we take that up?
So you can certainly extend it if you want. Our program operates on top of and a bit more than the current state amnesty program.
I think it expires March of 2020.
Is it 2020?
I think, I could be wrong.
But even if it does, isn't that a separate issue?
Yeah, I just think it's whether we have to take it up in the future agenda item.
Right, okay.
And, and the other thing is, I, last comment here in this round, and I agree with Wayne's suggestions, by the way. Boy, this having deed restriction on some and not others sounds like an enforcement nightmare. And I, do you see any particular problems if we just drop the deed restriction for everything?
No, another one of my cities did that as well. It isn't, they're not required. I mean, the prohibitions that are reflected in the deed restrictions still apply whether they are or are not on title.
Right.
So I don't think there's a legal issue. You know, some homeowner 10 years down the line may claim, oh, I don't know, I don't know, but they're still bound by the codes, so.
And I just, it seems like a nightmare, the way this is possibly set up on just a five-year for some and not for others.
Right.
I don't know, okay.
And the reason we have that in here, the current ordinance, is it reflects, we drafted this to go as far as we have to, not farther.
I know, I just.
But the council can go farther.
It just seems like, it just seems like having a five-year prohibition window, and it just, it just seems like it creates a heck of a lot of nightmare for code enforcement and staff, where we ought to be focusing our efforts on other things, just in my own opinion.
Miss end of the table, do we have any further questions of staff?
No.
I just, you know, here's some, some information I pulled up on AB 2406, which is the code section that covers these juniors. You know, and as I read into it, here's the thing that I highlighted, is current law does not prohibit local governments from adopting an ordinance for a JADU, and the bill explicitly allows, not requires, a local agency to do so. Do we have to have these, or do we not have to have these? Are these just adding confusion to what we're doing? So what I'm reading into this is, is it's up to us.
So the, the current law for JADUs is that you do not have to adopt an ordinance, you can, but if you don't adopt an ordinance, they're governed by state law. The old rule was we could choose whether or not to have them at all.
Okay.
And that got preempted.
Okay, that was my first question. The second one comes back to what Mr. Powers was talking to, and that is, you know, what's affordable housing about? What's it about in our?
Okay, but Randy, in the interest of time, affordable housing is separate from this topic, so if it's a quick question, fine.
It is a quick question, and it's two things. So, so the question is, how can we incentivize this community to do ADUs? And I'd like for staff to be able to look into that, and, and again, I brought it up in the, in the joint session. Is it through some form of a Mills Act? Is it, you know, something else that, that the community can do through the Housing Trust Fund? But I think that we need to start looking outside of the box to help the citizens build these ADUs, because right now, a lot of them aren't getting built.
We'd be happy to take a look at ways to incentivize it further and bring that back.
Yeah, the question I have, maybe you answered it at the beginning, and I didn't quite follow the explanation before we opened the hearing, but I received a letter from some law firm that was besmirching the good name of our city attorneys, who said, nobody else except your clients are claiming that you can't have what, a junior ADU and an additional ADU. What is the answer on that?
Yeah, so on that one, it's a group called Californians for Homeownership.
Yeah, yeah.
I think their name.
Yeah, I don't quite get the relationship between their name and the.
Yeah, it's, it's an advocacy group that seems hell-bent on the idea that you should be able to have both an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit under certain circumstances. And their reading, as I, as I look at it, is rooted in this very narrow reading of the statute. If you read one sentence by itself, it says that. If you put that sentence in context, where the paragraph begins a detached ADU, the paragraph above a ADU or a junior ADU, and the separate ADU statute six, that we were discussing earlier, is all a junior ADU, I think that there's a strong support for taking the position that we can continue to require one or the other, not both. I'll add that, and I'm sure they're listening now, I will add that the proper arbiter of this question lies in two places, three places. One, this council is setting a policy decision. Two, that the State Department of Housing and Community Development will, under this new law, be reviewing and commenting on our ordinance. When it's adopted, if adopted, we send it to them, they have 60 days to review and comment, then we get it back, and then we have a process where the council reviews their comments and either confirms, keep the, stay the course, or make a change, depending on what they say. And only then would it be right for the third category, a judge to review it and consider it. I wouldn't expect a reviewing court to rule anytime before HCD has opined on it, and that provides us the check. We don't know yet what the state thinks about this particular question. They assert that we're the only law firm in municipal law firm that has opined to this effect. I'm not sure that's true, because they haven't done a comprehensive survey of all 476 cities in the state. They've only surveyed 70, which is less than majority. And I think that it's within the council's power. If you wish to promote ADUs, then certainly you would take the position that in certain contexts, you could have both a junior ADU and an ADU, as was articulated by a couple of the planning commissioners, albeit not the majority. If you wished to see what HCD says, that would be a reasonable approach as well, and I think the choice lies in, really is a policy choice for this council. And then, of course, we'll see what the state says. The last point I'll add is that HCD released a two-page policy primer on Friday, which I think was for the unit, if not, we'll make sure you guys get it, that does not mention this requirement among 25 bullets, perhaps indicating where they land, although it's their initial assessment, not their final assessment.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Well, I think we all have one more thing to say, Mayor.
I just wanted to give, I just wanted to give staff real quick, AB, AB 671 is the bill that requires localities to provide incentive programs to homeowners for renting out their ADUs to lower very low-income people. And it says the ordinances have already seen great success throughout the cities of California. The bill also requires the state to develop the list of existing grants and financial incentives available. So again, that, this is already in motion, we don't have to invent the will on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Other question?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Maynard brought this up, if I was hearing correctly, but under footnote three on Attachment A 903, Matt, this is really a question for you. It says notwithstanding the maximum floor area of Table A, an ADU containing one bedroom can be up to 850, and two bedrooms is 1,000. I couldn't, I couldn't reconcile that with the chart, because it says 1,200 or 50%. I guess it says notwithstanding, but I couldn't figure out what we're doing there.
So as I read the way those fit together, the default rule is an ADU can be either 1,200 square feet, this is maximum size, 1,200 square feet, or half of the primary unit, whichever is littler. But there's an exception. If the ADU has one bedroom or less, so a studio, you can get up to 850 square feet, regardless of the 50% limit. So if you have.
Bigger than the main house.
It could be bigger than the main house.
So it's really that, that, the initial restriction is really about a studio versus a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom?
Well, let me, let me finish.
Sorry.
And then the second category is two or more bedrooms gets up to 1,000 square feet. So to put these in concrete examples, if you have a, let's say, a 1,300 square foot house, so half of that is 750 square feet. If you have a one-bedroom ADU, you get 850 square feet, even though half would be only 750, because one-bedroom ADUs are protected up to 850. If you wanted to do a two-bedroom ADU, you could get up to 1,000, even though your house is only 1,300.
If you did a studio, you'd be stuck at 50%.
Yeah, this, no, the studio would be part of the one-bedroom as well, one-bedroom or, or less, two-bedrooms or more.
So the other one never matters? So it's really up to eight, so 50% doesn't make any difference because you're always allowed up to 850?
That's another way to think about it, yeah. It's, it's, well, 50% matters if it's above that. If you had a 4,000 square foot house, you get, or a bigger house, maybe, what, 4,000, it'd be 2,000, the max is going to be 1,200. There's a, I guess it would matter if you're in that delta between half is.
Let me say it a different way. Maybe the table would be better said, one, one-bedroom up to 850 or 50%, whichever is smaller. Two-bedroom up to 1,000 square feet or 50%, whichever is smaller, and.
That would be okay, but there's, there are situations which you would still be allowed up to 1,200 square feet if you had a large enough house.
Okay, all right.
That's why, it's admittedly a little bit clunky.
Yeah, it's hard to understand, but okay, I'm with you. And then the only other thing I'll say is, JADUs serve an important role, because for the infill housing category of ADUs and JADUs, JADUs give you an opportunity where you don't have to build a new structure, you can take an existing structure, separate it out, and create a new unit. I think they're an important part, especially in a community like ours, where we don't have the land space to increase housing stock very well. JADUs serve that purpose. It's essentially a way to say, hey, I don't need to use all the space in my house, but I don't want to move, and I can help redo that by creating a separate secondary unit inside the same structure if you don't have enough, especially if you don't have enough size outside of it. So I just wanted to make sure it's clear to everybody what a JADU is.
Okay, do we have a motion?
And before a motion, I will say, Mr. Maynard is correct, it would make sense to add a provision reflecting new or expanded ADUs, and I think the best way to do that would be on Page Four of Attachment A, subsection C, kind of the beginning of this discussion, where we begin, notwithstanding any provision of these zoning regulations to the contrary, an application for a new or expanded accessory dwelling unit shall be approved ministerially by the director and go forth.
I will make a motion, including what Matt just added, because I have no idea what he just said. And I would like to, but I do want to make sure that is under the suggested adoption, under the staff recommendation, I should say, do, are JADUs included? Because it was a little confusing with the letter we got. I, I know that your, your law firm may have a separate policy, but are we including JADUs in the staff recommendation?
Yeah, so this includes allowing JADUs, it does not include allowing both.
Okay.
That would be the trigger.
I'm going to make a motion that includes the language you said before and allows both.
Okay.
May I make a, ask a, whether you, a slight amendment to the motion? What do you also think of Mr. Maynard's suggestion of dropping the 50% rule on the primary residence and let other constraints rule?
Because you think that allows it to be too big?
Well, no, his point was that if you have a very small primary residence.
Oh, yeah, that you're limited by that.
That you can't get up to the.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too, yeah. Now, well, let me, well, I would ask staff this first, is there, is there a potential problem that, you know, an unintended consequence of allowing a secondary unit that's larger than the original unit? And is it site, you know, because there's, because once we do that, we lose any right, I think we lose any ability to stop, like, site coverage, because ADUs are so exempted from so many things. You could build a tiny little main house and then suddenly be, have all these rights to a much larger ADU, and that's the only inverse situation I'm.
I understand that unintended consequence, I just, I wanted to raise the issue.
Yeah, I just don't know if they're, I, I agree with you in principle, but I don't know what the ramifications might be.
That is why the, the fit version metric wasn't there before, because it was intended to prevent building a tiny house, a small house, and then building a giant ADU.
In this system.
But isn't the giant second unit still limited to 1,200 square feet?
Still limited.
Yeah, or half.
You could build a 600 square foot house and then have a right to a 1,200 square foot ADU.
Right, subject to lot coverage and setbacks.
Good luck with that.
Correct, although lot coverage now.
Not a design review, because it's not two-story, suddenly, I mean, there may be other implications that domino effect through it.
And we still, we continue to require, if it's 16 feet or taller, which is going to include a second story, that still requires a design permit. The state doesn't protect two-story ADUs, it protects one-story ADUs. But lot coverage does have an exception.
What if we just significantly increase the percentage, like 85%?
Yeah, okay.
Now, would that, would that alleviate the concerns I addressed, but still allow it to be larger than we were considering before? If it's a small house, at least you still have an option to go.
Just increase up the percentage.
Yeah, that would increase the allowance significantly, but also still preserve.
If you had a 700 square foot house, you can't build anything more than 80, I mean, whatever that number is, 90%, 85. How about 90%?
Can I ask, are you finished down there?
Yes, thank you.
I just have one last question. How many ADUs or JADUs are we allowed per site?
The motion on the table is to allow one ADU and one junior ADU per house.
Just wanted to make sure, I think the public wants to know. Is it two, four, six, or eight?
And is the percentage going to be 85 on the amended motion?
85% support that.
Yeah, yeah.
Amended motion.
I have a question. So the motion would allow actually three households on one property, am I right? Okay. So can we also discuss the number of cars? Because you, you know, nowadays, some households have three or more cars, okay? We cannot have 12 cars on the property. So I'm all for having as many units as we legally can with the proper setbacks and all of that, but I think that in our little town, with our narrow roads, we need to, as part of this discussion, we, either tonight or next time, at some point, we have to discuss the number of cars and promote the concept of car sharing. It's just, you know, if we're going to have this privilege.
What are we allowed to do?
Of, yeah.
I don't think we have, I don't think we have the ability to prohibit car ownership.
Right.
But we certainly could look at ways to promote less car ownership. It might be the case of thinking, there are levers we can use that would promote ADUs above the base allowance if you would commit to not have a car or have less cars.
I think we're now wandering off into creating new legislation that goes beyond what we need to do tonight.
We gotta get this going.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, but let me just say, we don't want all these cars parked on the street. We can, we can have, we can address that.
Yeah, the state created a problem for us that we need to address.
I think we should take that up as an additional agenda item, but we kind of wanted the gun to get this going.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
And we'd be happy to study that further, more than this moment.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Is that agreeable with the mayor?
My motion understood by everyone at this point, okay.
Yeah, you accepted what the.
Yes, it's 85 percent is the amendment to the motion on the size.
Okay, so substitute motion that in court prays out, okay, we have one motion and we'll just, is there further discussion on the motion on the floor? If not.
Did I hear you say something about 85 percent? I never heard that before.
85 percent.
Up to 85, subject to the other limits.
In order to accommodate the main house, it's tiny.
It allows the, it allows the ADU to be a larger size than under the current code. So if, under the current proposal, so that if you have a small house, you can build one that actually is livable in size, we believe, so it'll help encourage it.
Okay, will the clerk call, please call the.
Second, was there a second?
Yeah, well, it was the amended.
And I second the amended.
But thank you for clarifying that.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blatts?
Yes.
In the interest of timelessness, Mayor, I'd like to move we take up item five. Mr. Chamberperson's been sitting here patiently.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay, no objection?
What's wrong?
What about, what's happening?
Okay, the, okay, Mr., I guess.
Wait, 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 what's happening now?
I think, I think somebody was waiting for four.
Yes.
Two people were.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Two people were.
Yeah, wait a minute, wait a minute, something's happening that doesn't.
Hold on, Christine, I might withdraw that.
Christine.
Okay, hang on, we have a, we have a closed session with the city attorney that we were intending to be doing in about three minutes. These, both these topics, I think, deserve.
And we've had people waiting on both.
Yeah, yeah, it's too late. Once people start waiting for three hours, we can't.
No, you're right. I withdraw my suggestion.
Well, maybe we can't bump or choose one over the other, but at what point are we going to, we agreed we would trail items at a certain point. Is the, is it the council's pleasure to just?
My understanding of the chamber of commerce item is that it's time-sensitive, so I think it, I think if we can, we should address it tonight.
That's what I was thinking, but.
And what, and continue the other one?
But I don't have a sense that the, the naming issue is going to take that long either. I think, I think we can work through our nine-minute deadline and give ourselves to 9:45.
Well, it, okay, well, it may not take time, but I have concerns with it, so let's proceed. Okay, let's proceed. Okay, we'll take it in the order that's in the book, is that, is that correct? And we'll deal with both of them?
I apologize.
Okay, okay, so item number four is up, policy naming city facilities and memorial plaques and markers on public properties. Brief introduction?
Yeah, very brief. This item is intended to allow discussion of two items related to naming policy. First is, the city council requested that the Parks and Recreation Commission develop a proposed naming policy, which they have done, and which is rich returns and is attached to the staff report. It's also intended to allow council to discuss pending requests for potential facilities to be named. Regarding the policy, just quickly, the policy discusses the procedure for naming. It is fairly broad, and it allows nominating throughout the year, allows council to assign the review to the commissions, and then the commissions to recommend to council who has the final approval authority. The criteria for the naming policy is fairly broad and basically allows recognition for anyone who has made a significant contribution to the community. So that policy is attached for council to consider, and with that, I will hand it back over.
Okay, I have, I do have concerns with this being overly broad, things like for fundraising campaigns and commercial. The way it is written, you know, we've had incidents in the past, this is a very hard issue to deal with, particularly when we're naming specific things, whereas if this was limited to, you know, memorial plaques and markers for citizens who, you know, are to be remembered or who have done, you know, great service to the community, that's a fairly easy one for the council, and we have been doing, doing that right along. But we are such a small town with so few places to name, and we don't, this doesn't really go into, for example, since this came up, there have been at least three requests to name stuff in town, one of which was withdrawn because the family said, wait a minute, you know, we're not, we don't want that, you know, because it was going to be, so it seems to me that, I mean, I would move, I don't know if I can get a second to this, but I would move this to be referred to a council subcommittee, which I would be happy to serve on, along with another member of the council, and we would bring it back at the next meeting, addressing the things that I, at least that I have concerns with.
Mr. Mayor, I was present when the Park and Rec, the Park and Rec Commission, right, debated this, and they debated it at length, several meetings, and there was a, there's a logic to their conclusions. I would be happy to be on a, on a committee if it's really essential, but I think we need to understand, I wish there was.
Well, I don't know why, my question would be, why we would refer this particular kind of policy to the Recreation Commission. I assume it's because at one point, the issue came up to name something in a park, but that's not the only place where names are placed on public facilities. So, you know, if there's a second, if not, I stand as only one concerned vote, but if you and I.
Well, my only hesitation is that there's some, what happens in the meantime?
In the meantime, what?
If, that we can't name anything, I mean, how does that work in real life?
Well, you, the council can do, I guess, as they please.
We can still do as we please.
But my concern is, and I can speak from personal experience, part of which is, my name's on something someplace, I won't go.
I was on Johnny Johnson Drive today, I just wanted to know that.
And I think the way, and I think the way that was worked out was, is that as I acknowledged it, when I retired, I said, you know, those of you who fondly remember me will appreciate the sign, and those who didn't will be happy to drive over me, so. Anyway, I really do think, you know, it's not a big deal in my life, but I think for this council and future councils, to have a really clear way of doing this, and what we're going to do and not do is important. I wouldn't want to delay it more than a couple of weeks, but I would hope that, you know, things like, you know, selling the name, it was proposed to take Libby's name off of Libby Bowle after, you know, 50 years or longer, for donation, you know.
What?
Yes, and that's probably what stimulated some of this referral. So I'm not trying to be a big critic, but I know how hard it is to do these things, and how you do it fairly. For example, Mrs. Weinberger is probably, you know, was the lifetime achievement for preserving the town and, you know, for the historical society, and this council granted that to her, and we put up a memorial plaque. You know, David Mason did incredible stuff, and we put up a memorial. I think those are much easier. When Mr. McPherson wanted to put up a monument in the middle of the plaza over the buying out of the water company, that became more problematic. But this idea of monuments and other things for a little town, and the kind of bureaucracy that's included in this, I would rather see it be a council action without nominations, because people can immediately want to nominate everybody, and how do you say your, your person is less important than my person or my nominee? It's a very touchy thing, but we could give them all places to put their memorial plaques or put their recognition plaques. It just seems to me that this is fraught with issues, but maybe I'm the only one who feels it.
Mayor, I'll second your motion on the condition that we do take public testimony on the, if somebody wants to speak on the agenda item. I would, I would.
Oh, oh, yeah, sure, they have a right, don't you?
People that want to speak to the issue, but I think, I think the two of you would be excellent to dig into this.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, but I.
Do we have cards on this?
We don't, we don't have any cards on here. I think they're here hoping that we're going to make a decision tonight.
Okay, but I, I'm, are you, I'm happy to be on the.
I'm seconding the motion for the two of you.
Yeah, but I can't, do, I cannot work on this for at least another month. So I, the second part of the recommendation is provide direction to staff regarding pending requests for potential facilities to receive naming memorials, plaques, or markers. So can we, you're saying we can still handle that, or you need direction?
It's within council's authority, yeah.
Okay. Okay, as long as I don't have to work on it for at least another month.
I just want to say that the one thing that makes the oh-high tick is that we are too small to have a bunch of in-house people that do everything. We constantly have to rely on outsourcing, and a lot of that time, that's through volunteerism. And one of the things I don't like about this is it makes a lot of rules and a lot of complications for something I think is pretty straightforward. I think the members of this council in the past and in the future will be able to assess those situations and determine it appropriately without all these rules and regulations and processes. I don't think it's that complicated. I can tell you that I believe the five of us can probably figure out what's right and wrong, and, and, you know, what.
Well, maybe Ryan and I should do it then, I don't, I don't want to delay it.
I just wanted, I just, I'd just like to comment. First of all, this came to Recreation Parks Commission when I was the chair, and it's a vetting process, that's all this is, it's a vetting process. It's an opportunity for someone from the community to have a place to go to say, this is what we'd like to do, and that was an opportunity to have a discussion on it and to forward a recommendation. It still can come to council if Recreation Parks makes a recommendation, that person doesn't get that. They can still appeal that and come here. Alls it was is, why it went to Recreation Parks is it needed to be vetted so it didn't take our time up, so we didn't have this conversation. That's all it was for. So I don't have a problem if you want to change that and you bring all of these nominations to council, just remember what you're doing is now you're.
No, I don't want to bring them, and that's the reason why I don't think we should have policies that say anybody in the community who thinks that they, something should be recognized can nominate it, and then what is the process by which one evaluates that? I'd say that.
Well, that's what the criteria here is for, is to give you some guidelines.
I want to, I want to speak up for the, for the work and the struggle that the Park and Rec Commission put into this, because if we were going to just dismiss the recommendations, we should have just told them that months ago. I would request that you watch the hearings on the videotape, and if you, maybe you already have, and, but it just feels like, it feels like perhaps more clarification is needed, but it doesn't feel right to just dismiss their work. To me, it doesn't feel right.
All right, then it's up to the council.
That's why I think you should take it up.
We're not approving a project, we're approving a bunch of rules for something that seems like it's much more a feeling that this, ultimately, this council's going to decide on these, and it's going to get vetted whether we take it up as an agenda item.
But if you adopt these rules, then you will be, to some degree, obligated to have the staff go through all this, and it is a huge amount of processing when, if there's a nominee for something, you know, there's, there's got to be a simpler way to do this.
I kind of agree. Look, two councilmembers can bring any agenda item, and they can bring this anytime they want. Why shouldn't that just be the policy?
So, you can, other than, like I said, what you're going to do is now you're going to take up council time to deal with a plaque or deal with this or deal with that. Watch, first of all, this isn't new. This is a revision. We already had an existing format for this. That's what this was. This is a revision.
Well, if you like it, fine, I'm just telling you I don't.
Unless, unless someone's done differently in the last six years.
We're arguing about nothing. Why don't you make a motion? Let's vote.
We have a motion.
All right.
Okay, so if we're done debating it?
What was the motion?
The motion was to refer it to a committee. You said you couldn't work on it for a month. I was suggesting that Ryan or anybody who wants to.
Somebody else who wants to do it.
We try and turn it down to a one-page and make it simpler, but if you don't want to do that, then you don't do it.
No, I'm fine. I think it should be, I mean, I think the council should be the, I haven't seen in my ear here a lot of this being bogging us down, so I think it's probably appropriate. But if you think it should go to Park and Rec, I mean, I appreciate, Randy, that you know a lot more.
Well, the motion is to refer to a subcommittee of two, that's the motion.
Right, no, yeah, that's, that's the recommendation for line item one. The second line item, providing direction to staff regarding pending requests that we'll take, you want to take these as separate motions? The first motion would be for the mayor and Councilman Blatts to review this and bring it back to council. The second one, to me, would be provide direction to staff regarding pending requests, and that we approve those requests.
And what are they doing?
Staff knows what those requests are.
So it'd be, the two requests would be, because one was withdrawn, so the two requests would be for the walkway and the bridge.
Right, great.
The city-owned path?
Yes.
Is this separate by the art center?
Mm-hmm.
Does the art center say anything?
We have not spoken with the. Yeah, but I'm looking at all this, and it kind of says it has to then be vetted by these rules, that, you know, so do you, I guess.
Well, are these rules in place? I mean, if they're in place, shouldn't we be following them? If they're not in place, we shouldn't? I mean, Councilmember Haney just told us they are in place.
I can already tell you that, I can already tell you, based on these, on the rules in place, that the request would qualify.
And to the extent.
Look at the rules, it says.
Draw the motion and.
Has made a contribution to the community. To the extent they are in place, the council still has the power to approve a name request above them or around them.
Okay. I will second Randy's motion.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Let's vote. That's what, dividing the question or something?
Yeah, dividing the question and voting on them separately.
Any objections to dividing the question?
No, that's great.
Not hearing any, okay, it's divided, so now where are we?
So on Randy's motion, I've seconded, I suggest we vote on that, and then we can go back to part one.
And is there going to be public comment, or we just don't have a card?
There's no public comment.
I think there were no cards. If anybody does wish to speak, you'd have to take comment.
No, they don't want to speak.
Yeah, all right. The sleeping dogs lie.
I ask if deliberations are complete, that we vote on the second part.
Do I have a second for my motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we need a roll call on number, number two?
And which are, which is, which motion are we voting on?
That we approve the request for the potential facilities to receive naming memorials.
Of the nominees or whatever, whatever this is, it, okay.
Shall I go ahead? Yeah. Councilmember Franc, Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Abstain. Motion passes.
Okay, all right, and then I, I am happy to be, I will, I will.
This was the one that approved, I guess, the.
Pending, 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 um.
The pending name.
First motion?
No, the second.
No, the second. It's a recommendation, too.
Okay, just a second. Let me, let me get, okay, now we are voting on whether or not you wish to refer these, these proposed policies to a subcommittee, or to, I guess, if you don't wanna do that, then I guess you're gonna adopt them, so.
I think it's the council committee. I, I'm gonna second the motion if it's the council committee of you and Councilperson Blatts.
Okay, so Ryan and I will take another crack at this and try to, you know, not throw it away, but just try to simplify it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so is there any further discussion? If not, okay.
There we go.
Do we, so ordered. Okay, we're done with that, okay, next.
Chamber.
Sausage and laws, sometimes they're not different.
I have a question before we move on. What is the process for Christine's request? Does she, is there something she?
She needs to meet with the city manager.
Meet with the city manager.
Yeah, I believe I have direction to, that they are approved, so I will meet with the requests and we'll, we'll coordinate.
It was approved?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, it was.
I could tell my family.
It was.
But you have to meet.
You haven't gone on social media and ran it. That's good. I'm glad you have the right flag.
I tried to follow.
Okay, you, you meet with the city manager.
Meet with the city manager.
So we'll follow up.
The city manager.
Thank you, city, well.
Okay. See you. Okay, next, what happened? We, did we lose a quorum? No, no.
We still have quorum. It's a plumbing issue.
Yeah, I'm hanging in there.
Can I take a break or not?
Well, we, we're only holding up the.
I really think we need to get to the chamber issue.
Yeah, let's do the chamber, and then a break, and then.
Okay, five, five minutes?
Okay, five minutes, we'll be right back.
Oh, no.
We'll proceed.
Can I ask for the access? Sorry about that.
I turned your mic off. Turn it back on.
Okay, item number five.
Sweet, pass her 9:45.
Right.
Well, we got to do this one.
So, who's introducing the city manager?
Yeah, I could just do a very brief introduction. The city funded a budget request for a business development agreement with the Chamber of Commerce during the budget process this year. The city council funded the initial six-month term with the request to report back, or for the chamber to report back on progress made after six months, and that's the point we're at today. So, the report is included and attached to the staff report, and the request for funding from the chamber is also included, which includes the continuation of the funding for the, for that agreement, but it also includes a request for funding for the broadband project, which the Chamber of Commerce has been coordinating. So with that, that's back to you.
Questions?
Yes.
With respect to the broadband, is it, where do we stand, do you think, practically speaking, on the ability to have an executed MOU and possibly a project ready to go when and if Measure C passes or soon thereafter? Or at least progress on the project?
Yeah, I guess, I, the...
Well, let's ask the first question. Would funds for Measure C be eligible for a broadband project?
That's infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yeah. Public, capital improvement projects. And I think that's exactly the problem, is that right now, without funding, it's kind of stalling, so...
Wouldn't a memorandum of understanding allow at least the specifics to be defined?
Right.
And being ready to go?
Right.
And would, if we fund this, would it, what, to what extent could we have something ready to go by, let's say, April or May?
Well, I feel like that's actually a question for the chamber as far as how, you know, it's going to be how quick they can, they can move it forward.
And then one other couple, well, we'll wait and get that answered. The other content, the question I have is, I'm a little concerned over the three industries that have been identified so far as candidates, limited in the creative content industry. I call it the creative content industry, and, and limited just to music, when I think the creative content in general, we have a lot of, especially we get broadband up here in terms of animation, scripts, film, video plays, movies, more than just music.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. I'd like to see that in there. It's not limited to music, but I don't, you're going to have to get up there. Those are my comments.
Okay. Other questions?
No, yet, no.
Okay, I, I wonder if anybody says, "With no offense," you can get ready to be offended, but...
You know, I, when I look at this, I looked at it as, what is the fundamental, my father was a chamber manager, and what is, the fundamental purpose of a chamber traditionally was networking, ombudsman to help solve problems for businesses, tracking and promotion, promote, and promoting the local economy and activity. And they served as a, as a function of community in unincorporated areas primarily, or they served as an umbrella over large areas that didn't regard, without regard to city boundaries. That's one vision of it. Ohio, obviously, is a little different, but my question is, and I asked this, I thought, during the budget hearing, maybe not clearly, what was the purpose? We, right now, we're running a $50,000 deficit, and I'm sure that by the time we get to the end of the year, that portion of the budget's going to get resolved, but it was a deficit we went into this with, so if we're going to spend more money for something, you know, there are two kinds of expenditures. One is the one-time expenditure line, "Let's do broadband or something," you know, good idea. The other kind is, is sort of sustaining membership or dependency to fund another organization that is not really able to operate on its own. I suspect we have a little bit of both here. When I look at the, the report that came back, through no fault certainly of the manager, but what I, I see here, to the degree we have data, is about like, probably 90% plus overhead as opposed to program or special projects. I guess this is waiting the broadband activity. I think that's a good project, but it seems to me, with us running a, we haven't had the mid-year report yet, and I don't know where the manager sees it right now as far as the, the deficit, but with Measure C on the ballot, coming up in what, less, what, eight weeks, whatever the...
It's in March.
Maybe even shorter than that, maybe six weeks, yeah. It just seems to me, if we're going to, you know, I, you know, an additional $10,000 or something for operational sustaining membership, I can see, but going, you know, or for a one-shot deal, you know, for the, for a larger amount, where it's not supporting the ongoing operation of an, of an organization. Both of those things seem practical, but to increase the amount of money that we're putting into this, without knowing if we're going to have an increase in revenues, I think is not, I can't support it, if that's what it's going to be. So I don't know how this, you know, I square the, the report, and I guess Jamie, you'll explain that to us, but whether we really are helping keeping something alive, but not being able to advance. The whole, the whole purpose, when we talked about this, was to diversify the economy, and through, I say, you know, the bad news are the, you know, I guess, the bad news is, is we aren't, and the good news is, from the standpoint of the people trying to diversize the economy, it's almost an impossible task. We are fundamentally real estate and tourism, and, you know, to try, you know, the idea that the merchant community is struggling mightily, and mostly having to turn to things like restaurants and bars because of the internet, e-commerce. So, anyway, that's just one person's concern. Other comments?
Well, are there any public comments?
I think we should hear from the chamber.
Should we let Jamie speak and address his report, and then we can bring it back to council?
Sure.
Okay. I think a lot comes down to just the value of what I think this chamber is doing for the city, and I also think, one of the biggest disappointments we had was, the chamber was running for many, many, many years with the tourism board funds coming in. When you pull that completely out and still be looking for one person and a part-time assistant to carry on as many things as a chamber tries to do in this town, to increase the energy, the vitality, be a support, work with the city, and then even start taking on so many of these committees and projects that we do as a one-man store, I think you're really getting your money's worth to have us actually in existence. You saw from the financials, we're doing as best we can for the limited time of resources we have to be addressing all the things and plates we have in the air. At the same time, I'm now trying to even get some more, a better fundraising in, because I'd like to by July, when we come back, to have shown that we're actually getting better at getting to the, back to where a chamber, even though most chambers are dying in cities, here, I've been able to at least increase the membership 25%, which shows people are seeing the value of what we're trying to do and bringing the energy back to this town. So I think it really comes down to, do you see a value of having a chamber? Do you see a value of what I'm doing, and is it worth another six months? The broadband project is critical. The diversification of this economy, I disagree. I am meeting with all the hotel owners in one room this Friday to start discussing, what are we going to do Monday through Thursday? And I already have a plan to...
But that's not diversifying, that's promoting tourism.
No, no, I agree, but as far as the diversifying, again, I wrote down a lot in there, but I wanted to address the fact that, yes, there's a lot more than just the music industry, and I have examples of how we're working with a company that doesn't want to be divulged at this time, but they're talking about very advanced food growing in the upper, not the upper, but in the East End, if they can find the right properties, which is water-sustainable. I think that is diversification. I think the software industry, which I've been partners in a software company for many years, and I just see how they fit in a valley like this very well, but I can't be approaching that until I actually can show them broadband and that we're going to become a smart city. So I'm trying to help us as a city move step by step in the right direction, so that we can maybe get off and attract companies in here that can afford with their executives and, and afford to live here, which are software and high-end service and, and things like that. But we have to make this a smart city, or at least get on the way to that.
No, I agree that the, with the broadband idea.
It's critical.
But that's just like, you know, getting, upgrading our utilities to something that's modern. I don't see how that necessarily does much to employ anybody particularly locally. There may be a few that would be, but if, most of the people, you know, at least my experience with the dot-com industry, is they go where the, you know, the institutions, the brains are to do that sort of thing, and in some cases are building their own villages someplace, and to bring the people in. How would we, how does that...
Are you only addressing the software industry then?
I'm just, yeah, for one, and the thing about the idea of three-dimensional, what is it, printers?
That, that right there...
I know it was right there, except that that, those, the, the whole concept of a three-dimensional, that is, my understanding is polymer, is it not, that you, that is extruded through heat? How do you build it?
No, no, no. The 3D printing, they can use all different kinds of materials, is what I understand.
Aluminum or something?
Powdered metal.
No, 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 no. It's, it's formed of, you know, I'm not an expert on it, but the people I'm talking to are extremely environmentally interested, and so I'm, the impression I have is even a hemp strength type of concrete. Ray, you know a little bit about this, don't you? And so, I think...
Hempcrete.
Hempcrete, and so, no.
Are they opening up a hempcrete plant here, or just using those...
They're, they're looking at, there are a lot of industries that might be able to come here because of the brand, and then export out products like that, but I'm meeting with that company actually Sunday morning, just to discuss it.
Ryan?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to use your own words here. I respectfully disagree.
Yeah, okay. No, I said, "No offense."
Oh, no offense, I'm sorry.
And then immediately that came out. It seemed offensive, but that's okay. Okay, so do be respectful.
Fair enough, but the, the, no effort has been made in this community to diversify the economy in Ohio, maybe ever. I don't know when the last time anybody made any effort. Jamie's been working on this for, what, a year? I mean, we, I don't think he was going to turn us from a tourism and real estate community inside out to a brand-new community in the six months we've been funding him. I am acutely aware, since I was on the chamber board when we hired Jamie, of the situation that was there with the chamber, where it has come now. I've attended many of the meetings, I've been in the board, I know the board members. The value we are getting for what Jamie is providing to this community is invaluable, and the numbers that are associated with it, to me, are a very, very good investment, and he is doing everything he can to stretch every cent he has, and if it is in some form propping up the chamber, this community is much better with the chamber, and much better with some public assistance for it than it is without it, I am 100% convinced of that. The fundamental idea behind this broadband initiative is that we don't have the staff and the time and the investment in a economic development director or other economic development issues inside City Hall that other cities do, and we are outsourcing that to Jamie. He is doing this service essentially for the city, along with all the other stuff that's going on, from the information booth at the plaza to hosting entertainment events there, where he has had singers down there and other stuff that has really improved the community and made, people are really enjoying it. He's taking on some of the services that the city frankly should be able to provide on their own, so I see it as an outsourced, value-added situation, and we are not going to have any ability ever to have any chance, in the new digital age, in the new environmental age, to have any diversification of our economy unless we are willing to invest in it, and I haven't seen any other options for this council to put their money towards the investment in the future, diversification of this economy, except this, and Jamie is super committed to it, to the extent that he has talked to a number of businesses, he's working on it, and if this broadband thing can get in, I believe it's a "build it and they will come" situation. While every digital business may not be able to be decentralized from locations of where the brain trust is, there are plenty that are decentralizing from major metropolitan areas where they can have their people live nearby, and they can be able to commute digitally with the rest of the world, and the main factor they have is they just can't be too far away from a, a major metropolis area, and we're an hour and a half from LA. It's not so remote that we can't do that.
But doesn't that, doesn't that suggest that the people can live here and work remotely, but work for somebody else?
Well, I, I think...
And I'm sure how that helps the, diversify the economy.
Well, if, if, if the individual employees at a company can live in a better place rather than in an urban area, that is the future of where digital employment is going. They want to live in a more rural, more outside area, and that, Ohio fits that bill. The only type of businesses I believe we can bring in that are going to replace the brick-and-mortar stores, if they continue to have trouble, that are going to add diversification to our economy, are those types of businesses. And frankly, if it wasn't for Jamie, I don't think this broadband initiative idea would even be developed, wouldn't get off the ground, we just don't have anybody else to do it, and that's not even counting the litany of other things that are really supportive of the local community, and there is a place to go for these businesses, the, the attend, just, just the membership rate, you know, any, nothing in Ohio is increasing its attendance rate, except for the golf league I run and the Chamber of Commerce, and nothing, I mean, really, nothing else, Little League, the school district, population across the board, we're not seeing the increase in any of these areas, and that's how hard Jamie's been working.
Aren't those mostly social activities? I looked at here, $40,000...
No, signing up for the Chamber of Commerce is a monetary activity. You have to see the value in the services provided.
Right, but I don't see that in here as far as how, the revenues from memberships, I mean, they show a number, but it's a fairly small number, it's about what we're...
The attendance of the mixers has gone from an average of 20 to 30 to 100%, that's about a four or five times increase.
That's, that's attendance of people who are here.
Business education.
Well, no, it's not. It's a lot of out-of-town people.
Is it?
We have a number of people. We have, I've, I've met Ventura Realtors, we had, not that he's everybody's favorite person, but we had Mayor, Mayor LeVere there.
Mayor, you, you two are having a lovely conversation, but I think Councilman Wyrick and Councilman Francina would like to speak to you.
Okay, well, thank you.
I was trying, I was interrupted, I wasn't having a conversation. But I, go ahead.
Okay, we'll come back to you.
Do you want to go first, or...
And I just, and including Restaurant Week, that's been a huge hit, I mean, come on.
All right, well, I, I, I support what Ryan has, has so eloquently and passionately pointed out. I also see, as far as diversity, I think the chamber understands that we have to diverse the kind of tourism that we get, you know, the right kind of tourism, that people come here for what's, not loopy-loos to buy junk, but people that come here for, for education, which we can provide, and, and I say that in the broadest terms, not just the schools, the private schools, the public schools, but the, the, the potential to educate people to live sustainably. You know, the goal is to make Ohio a world-renowned, sustainable community, and people can come here to learn, and that's happening already on a small scale, it can happen on a larger scale, and that's the kind of tourism that wouldn't have an impact, and the negative, a negative impact on our community. It would be a positive impact. It would be people that would walk, ride their bike, they want to live green. I love that you're focusing on green business, that we should certify every business in town. The town is, the town is attracting more filmmakers, and, and the right kind of filmmakers, not junk, you know, but again, educational, documentary, all right, okay, maybe there's...
That's not, that's a non-content-based research.
Okay, so I'll count that as a yes vote.
And, and food, and what you said, you mentioned food growing, you know? Those are all things that could potentially support Ohio, and plus, the retirement aspect, you know?
So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the funding of 51,000 additional for the chamber as requested.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Did you have something else you wanted to add, or do you want to vote, vote on it?
I just wanted to add one small comment where I would take exception with one thing you say about business location in today's world. I think that when you, amenities are what drive a lot of the knowledge and creative content industry, and what prevents that location where they would want to come here for those types of businesses is, in fact, the lack of a broadband, is the lack of the more comprehensive services. We, I personally know of a company that relocated from Simi Valley to Ventura just because of the amenities, and they were considering coming up here, but they couldn't make it work, and one of the reasons being broadband, and that was a...
Okay, no, I don't dispute the broadband as be a help in that direction, not at all.
That's all, my only comment.
My, my only comment is, is I don't see how that's improving the tax base and diversifying it, but that doesn't mean it's not a good idea to try and to make those who are already here do better, so...
They can earn an income without going down the hill.
So... You're in Ryan's old seat.
That's right, I know.
I'm always going to.
I guess, no problem.
I call him Randy, and you're Ryan.
So, so that's why I thought, that's why I thought we were going to keep the seats.
Your brother's by another mother, yeah, go ahead.
So, so one, I want to agree with you, you know, when you look at, look at this fiscally, I understand your reservations, and, and I would probably agree with you 100%, in fact, I do agree with you on that 100%. And then you flip it over and you say, "What are the services that are being provided, that haven't been provided?" And I would ask the city manager, "If you had to staff this position, what would it cost us?"
With everything and attachment B that's going on.
And so, that's what I'm saying, is, is we have technically farmed out an economic division of our community to the chamber, who is more in tune with those people and those types of services. So I get the, I get the win-win there. That's why I'd, I'd be in agreement to support them. I'd also like to think about...
But you want to ask that question of the city manager, you know, what do you hire for?
We could ask for that to come back, I agree with that.
Are we vote?
Yeah, so, so we're getting a two-for, actually, but, but actually, we get a two-for for that, because we're actually getting Jamie and we're getting an assistant. So, the other thing that, that comes to mind, like I said, they're providing a service that we couldn't do, that we could do ourselves, but we don't have someone to do that. The other part of it for me is the fact that we supported the chamber prior to the TOT coming into effect. We, and I don't know it, what number, and I don't know if we have that information available, but we did support them at one time, probably to a tune of $40,000 a year.
That is correct.
Before.
Right, and that's why I thought the 50 was certainly in order.
So, so we've upped that $50,000, and we've expected more from, from the chamber, and I, and I think right now the chamber is fulfilling. And I can say this wholeheartedly, what we were getting under the previous administration at the chamber for that value is nothing compared to what we're getting at this point.
Let's, let's call a question.
So, the, so the last thing I want to say is, though, is this actually works into the planning that we're doing for the next two years, and, and that if they can bring something substantial to our thought process into how our future looks, it's a win.
Let's vote.
You ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, call the vote.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yeah, I'm going to have to say no, but...
Mayor Protem Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed.
I've been at the end of a four-to-one vote many times.
Absolutely, yeah.
Been there.
I have to say, I got to know Jamie a lot better.
Okay, so we now need to adjourn to the closed session, is that right?
I mean, I already felt good about the surface, but I went a little bit...
Not really.
Unless you wanted to take report, the report items.
We're lucky.
I have one thing to report, I was elected vice chair of APCD, thank you.
Okay. We're, we're going to come back, well, you, you want to do that, and then when...
It's the council's choice.
Then come out and just adjourn the meeting, is that...
Let's finish this and then go.
Where are we?
Okay. Okay, that seems to be everybody's desire, so, any reports?
No.
No, no.
No, just the vice, and, oh, VCOG, we had the ag commissioner in at the same time, James, are you going to talk about that, or, I think everybody's been briefed on that. The only good news is that the county, I haven't known if it's been approved yet, I think it was today, maybe they were voting on it, but it's a half-mile, you know, we went from no restrictions available to the strongest restrictions in the state over six months, and everybody seems to forget that we started the process.
Because of us, because of Ohio.
So, that's good news, and that's, that's really, that's on the HAP issue, obviously.
Real quick, just for the record, Councilperson Haney and I, along with the publisher of the Ohio Valley News, appeared with our three minutes per in front of the Ventura City Council, and basically served notice that, you know, we're, we're really, really upset, and we're going to do something about it.
Okay. They're on, they're on double, triple probation or whatever, animal house, yeah?
They're on notice.
Okay, James?
Just a couple of quick things. One, I just want to reiterate that the Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee Public Workshop is Saturday, January 25th, at Nordoff High School, which the school district offered in support of the climate committee, so we wanted to say thank you for that, and it's at 9:00 AM on Saturday, the 25th. And as a reminder, that there is going to be a public meeting at the Boyd Center on the 21st at 5:30 about the water issue hosted by the Ohio Valley News. And then, just lastly, on the January 28th meeting at this point, the items we have tentatively scheduled are the HPC Minor Work Permit Timeline item coming back, we've just continued the attendance report to, to that meeting to, to follow up on that, we have the Active Transportation Project Milestone Report coming back, a solar energy request for proposal item that we'll be bringing back, and the fire code update as well, and then a request from two council members regarding the skate park lease extension and expansion.
So, not the latter, we're going to postpone the latter?
Oh, so we do have that tentatively scheduled, if...
Tentatively scheduled, because we're working on it.
Okay, good.
But keep it tentative, keep it tentative.
We have it earmarked.
We'll have it done.
That letter could get pregnant and have another letter by now.
Okay, all right.
How did we, how did we leave it if, since you approved the two semi-anonymous, whatever it was we just did on naming, is it Ryan me, or are we going to wait a month and then Susan makes it?
It's the two of you.
The two of us.
Okay, the two of us, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I can't, I can't ignore.
Very good.
Are we going to do future agenda items real quick?
Sure.
Is that what we're doing? Yeah.
I just wanted to bring up that, you know, because we are in litigation, we have to sue, that we need to agendaize a discussion on that, or we need a closed session on it, but I prefer, I prefer a discussion, especially coming after the meeting on the 21st, it might give us some insights as to what we want to do and how we're going to achieve some satisfaction.
Well, and if that could be inclusive of an open agenda item discussion of lifting the well moratorium, I'd like to include that as well.
Lifting the well moratorium, so, you know who can drill a 10-foot hole and have standing in the courts, is that?
Right.
Okay. We haven't been sued yet, have we?
Yes, we have.
Yes.
We will be, we'll be, we'll be, have been served.
We haven't been served yet, this is for the city, you're telling me.
Yeah, so...
We are about to be served.
The city has been named in the Third Amendment Cross Complaint filed with the court by Ventura on January 2nd. It has not yet been served on the city, which means our deadline to respond as an institution is not yet running.
But that was a courtesy to you.
It was a courtesy, yes, and they haven't yet served it, and we're hoping to buy additional time for the council to evaluate the matter. And yes, staff can, I very much agree that this needs a closed session discussion for the council to evaluate the best way to protect the valley, followed by an open session discussion to implement said strategy, once the council has, has heard a full briefing and evaluated the best way to protect the valley. And for those property owners or homeowners who are sitting and worrying, "What do I do, what do I do?" In the end, you, each person must decide for themselves, evaluate with your own counsel, but you'll get some more information on the issue at the January 21st meeting, 5:30 PM next Tuesday at the Boyd Center, which will have some information, not a pro bono session, there's not going to be, if you want purely legal advice, you'll, you'll have to secure that for yourself, but there's some information that will be provided there, and the city continues to evaluate.
The meeting on the 21st is not a officially sanctioned meeting, that's a town hall, the meeting on the 30th isn't officially...
Yeah, it's not us.
Sanctioned meeting through the court process.
Yeah, the January 21st meeting is hosted by the Ohio Valley News, it's a community town hall.
January 30th.
January 30th.
I don't know what time, but it's at Matilla.
It's the get-ready-for-those.
Yeah, and the January 30th meeting...
I got it right here.
That one is hosted by the city of Ventura that has sued everybody.
Okay, so it's 5:30 for the thing next Tuesday?
Yeah, 5:30 at the Boyd Center.
Okay.
This is six to eight.
So, we will, there will, after the...
The 28th will have closed and open session on discussion of this.
I think that's what I'm hearing from the council.
Broadly defined.
Do I have to come out there?
Well, and, just briefly, the, the concerns that we're hearing is, is the city going to defend me, that's what I'm getting, or is the city going to create an environment where we can all defend each, you know, they're the main body of it, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not...
Well, or if there'll be another organization.
But we need to, but that's what they all want to hear.
Well, that's what we'll find out, you know, and those questions and others on Tuesday, next Tuesday, and then we'll decide how to best address it, okay?
So, I think broadly defined, open and closed discussion.
Chief?
Yes. At ease, don't, don't smoke them even if you got them, but you're, you're...
Welcome, and we'll see you on the 24th.
Yeah, you're, thank you for sitting through that.
I have a word, thank you very much.